Hey, welcome everybody. Today is May 24th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Dave.
Good.
This time I'll ask if there's any emergency additions to the agenda.
What did I know of?
Nothing for me.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Would you second in all favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Casey, come on up. We'll get started on the claims. Yes, my only question, and I kind of answered it myself when I saw it again, was the $2,000 for scoped carbene class for deputies. I thought it was actually called.
Oh.
I thought when we bought those rifles, we had scopes.
Yeah, this is for the class, yeah.
So we will wire or cut a check to go to the title company for our purchase?
Yeah, I've got the claim here.
Okay.
So I'll have you guys, I have the paperwork for you to sign.
Okay.
As well as the board order part of the claim for you to sign.
Okay.
We will hold that check, and then if one of the commissioners wants to take that check to First American.
I'll do.
Karen.
Perfect.
That's the arrangement.
Okay. I will pick up that check on Wednesday and get it over there so that it can clear. They have to have collected funds, so I will make sure that we get that cleared before closing date.
I'll have it this afternoon, so.
Okay. Perfect.
And then the other question I had is, do you know, just off the top of your head, did our work prints go up? It seemed to me like it went up.
I don't think so.
Is it about the same?
I think it should be the same.
Those usually start going down if you don't have them.
Get a presentation, if you would like, from them. Usually they provide those figures to R and T, Gabby. I don't know.
Maybe what I'll do is ask, can Pat get that too? Can she get those from? I would just be interested to know. No, our medical church is not going to do it, but I'm worried about this and I could another one to watch, big one.
I will email both Pat and Gabby when I get back to my next steps.
And then sometime we need to have a discussion about, we want to keep the house cleaning, courthouse cleaning at five days a week. At one time we were at three. And that saves us, that saves us a couple thousand dollars a month. We all need to sit down and have that discussion. Have a talk.
Discussion.
I don't know. We have enough people coming in and out of here that.
And I'm not sure it's time yet, but I think we need to keep that in the back of our mind. Dollars.
Well, we have a contract until September?
That's correct.
So we can have that discussed during the budget.
Commissioners, yes, I've requested Scott to talk to the commissioners about that and potentially putting that bid out now. So we have a bid well in advance prior to setting the budget, so.
Maybe have him do it with three days and five days, so we know the difference between those budgets.
Same thing with the annex too, Doug?
Correct.
I think the annex is only getting $60.
They're getting.
Oh, no, not the annex, my, my apologies.
Eova, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the annex is $2,000 a month from.
Yeah, it used to be $700. And that, maybe we can talk to, skip email, he's like.
And that's just our section of the annex that doesn't have anything to do with the police department, correct?
The other question I had, Casey, and then I think I've done is, I can't remember, when we do a cremation for someone, do we lean on that estate?
No.
Some of the other counties started doing that because they have lessons of the week.
Right, I think a lot of those, you know, they're indigent and they don't, they don't have an estate to lean on, they don't have family, they don't have anything, so, but.
Don't they have to qualify upfront? I think they have to qualify for.
They do, and then, I mean, then the coroner makes that request through us, and then we, the indigent, definitely researches it to make sure that there isn't any other way to pay for that.
So does that include interviews with the family members? Lean to kids?
I mean, they make an attempt to reach out to the family, but ultimately it's the coroner's decision to request funds, the indigent funds to pay for those. Really, it's a conversation to be have.
So are you going to bump that budget then Doug, or do we have enough in there to handle this?
At this point in time, we've left it the way that it is, but we can take a look at that.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about that when we get to budget. Is there any more questions for Casey? Order does happen here.
One on top. So we did it as a claim. You guys will sign, and then so page on the back of the contract. So sign, so. Don't you acknowledge today?
Hey, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to pay the claims, border claims?
I know that we pay the claims and border claims.
I'll second that.
Would you second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Read to everything. Questions I'll ask.
He figures you get it from enough of us that.
You guys probably asked the question.
My name is misspelled.
Is it?
I am going to change the spelling and then initial it. So just in case the contract is.
Got that, and I didn't even look at it.
Worries. I will let Karen know, but just to make sure that's changed. I was at a rotary function and I was Meghan Markle, so I could change my entire name. They stuck a name tag on our back and we had to, we had to figure out who we were from the questions that were asked.
We'll let Karen know, she's the one that sent this over to us. We'll let her know that she misspelled her name, make sure she has it written on that.
Perfect.
Now we get to see the drone.
I was going to say, you want to go to drone training? Have some fun. I want to do that. It's going to be a day today. I was putting together stuff and I spilled coffee everywhere this morning.
Oh, no.
My hands were just sore.
I'm going to scour through those and come up with some really out there questions for the annex two weeks.
Oh, I did it to myself, didn't I? Yeah, okay.
You're kind of easy, you just leave it up to us to pick them.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Casey.
Thanks, Casey, have a great day.
You too.
Okay, we're going to go on down our agenda. Our next item is elected official reports. First one up is June. Glad to see you're walking straight again.
Good morning. Yeah, I'm glad I'm standing upright, too. So I do not have a lot today. We are still finalizing everything. Edie will start our final certification tomorrow. We're looking at an average, an estimate of about an overall 22% increase, but that's not, that is not set in stone yet. I will have that after we finish our certification. We will be sending out the assessment notices on Friday, the 4th of June. They have to be in the mail by the first Monday in June, which is June 7th. I would like to, Clerk Miller, if possible, get on the commissioner agenda on Monday, June 7th, sometime if there's any openings, to come up and review everything with you at that time, because by then we'll have everything completed, we'll have all of our information, and we can update you on everything where we're at.
Are you going to put any kind of letter in the?
Yes.
Assessment?
Yes, I am. I'm going to compose that letter this week. I've given it a lot of thought. And every time I go read something on the computer on the news, it's amazing. It comes back to Idaho, comes back to Boise, comes back to the Treasure Valley about how it is exploding. And without repeating everything that you see in the news over and over, I'm going to try to make it very simple, very generic, but let anybody know that maybe if they're lucky enough to be unaware of what's actually happening, when they get that letter and that assessment notice, they can read it and understand. This is not just Idaho, this is nationwide.
And what's your cutoff date for the, that assessment? So if we're 22% up, is that through the end of December?
Yes.
Because between now and the end of December, we're probably another 20%.
We're about 30%, we're about 30% low on what I've seen coming in on sales so far from January on.
So we may, we may also give people a heads up in your letter that this is as of December 31st, and we have continued to see increases since then, so people.
It's going to go up next year again unless something drastic happens. I don't have a crystal ball.
Are you going to explain the new homeowners exemption and the circuit breakers and all that stuff that is.
As soon as I, as soon as I can understand it myself, I do have a letter into the State Tax Commission. We are trying to get some exact answers. It's very confusing. It's very confusing. The developer discount's confusing, that's been changed, the change of use. We've got to get some answers before I can try to explain that to anybody, because I need to be able to understand it thoroughly, and hopefully I'll get an answer today or tomorrow. The tax commission is struggling trying to get clarity on all that. We don't have rules anymore, so I can't go to a rules committee meeting to try to get this worked out, so we have to do it this way.
Okay, well, it's good to be in an area where the values are going up instead of the values going down, because that's just the opposite problem.
It is. Clerk Miller, will I be able to get on the agenda on June 7th?
June, if you can send us an email.
Yes, I will.
If you can send us an email, we'll make sure that we look at some potential times.
Okay.
And respond that way.
Perfect. And if you have any preference on how long you'd like us to meet with you, I will let you make that decision. Okay, any other questions?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a great day. Hey, Mr. Miller.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Before we get to our action item, I'll just give you a brief update of what our office has been working on for the past couple of weeks. As you probably have seen, the Supreme Court issued a modified order regarding the court operations. So we will be meeting with Judge Dingoldine today to get some instructions from him of how he wants to begin conducting in-person court. Again, the Supreme Court issued a modification last week allowing in-person court to be taking place. There is some, again, still some restrictions that have been implemented regarding social distancing. The Supreme Court has issued, they're in their order, they've issued, the masks are not mandatory but recommended. So again, we'll be reviewing the new orders with Judge Dingoldine today. Judge Scott, our district court judge, has made a decision to begin district court in person June 14th. So that's when we will be having in-person court for district court for those felony cases and any matters that are before the district court. Those will begin in person on June 14th. And again, we'll be meeting with Judge Dingoldine today to just get his direction of when we will be doing magistrate court in person. So we will be moving, moving in that direction at this point in time.
Doug, you know how many trials they've kind of got scheduled up?
I can tell you that we do have one trial scheduled for June. And then we have, you know, several cases that are just continuing at this point in time, so.
So how's he doing arraignments? Is that those with masks or without masks?
Well, right now, it's all virtual.
Okay.
So, but again, we'll be meeting with him today to find out the date that he wants to set to begin all in-person court. I anticipate that, that he'll make a decision probably starting the 1st of June would be my guess, or the 4th of June. But again, I can't, because we're going to have to make sure that we send notice out to the individuals now that have courts set for the next couple of weeks virtually. I think we'll probably just continue with those virtual cases, and then anything after that, any new arrests, any new court dates, we'll make sure that we modify their notice of hearings and send that out to the individuals and their attorneys indicating that it will be moving to in-person court.
Doug, isn't most of the issues when you got to pull, pull for a jury, right? The rest of the time, everybody else can kind of social distance?
Well, depends how busy of a calendar we have, too. If we have, you know, 30 arraignments in one day, we're just going to have to make sure that in the courtroom we are complying with the, the social distancing requirement. So there, there are going to be some things that we have to look at.
Do you think that they will offer any kind of a blended type schedule? I'm just thinking, there's been a lot of cost savings without having to have people travel and all that kind of stuff? Do you think it'll just?
I mean, it's an option, but it's an option that the judge will have. The judge, basically what I reviewed in that, in that modified order is the judge has the discretion to require or to allow virtual appearances to be made. I don't want to say this, but unfortunately, a lot of the cases that we do have in Valley County are from out-of-county residents. So the judge will have to make that decision if he's going to allow those individuals to appear virtually or in person. I have my own opinion on that, because I do think that courts are serious enough matter that you probably should appear in person. But again, it's going to be the judge's call to make that decision if it will be, if they'll be allowed to appear virtually or in person. But yes, you are correct, Commissioner. It has been a cost savings, you know, maybe not necessarily for us, but for the defendants, for the attorneys to appear just virtually. And it's possible that a blended approach to court might continue, but I anticipate the judges requiring an in-person hearings. So that kind of concludes my presentation regarding court operations. The clerk's office has been working on budget workshops with department heads and elected officials. This afternoon, the commissioners have their first interaction with the elected officials and department heads regarding the budget requests. We also have on the agenda to review the commissioners' budgets, so we're going to spend the first hour of the afternoon reviewing the commissioners' budgets that, and I think you've, you can see that on the agenda, those budgets that we're going to be reviewing. I did sign up for the U.S. Treasury portal last week, and so that has been accomplished, that has been completed. Now we'll just kind of wait for our civil attorney to continue to monitor the, I guess, guidelines, the interim rules, and then when the commissioners make a determination on when we want to apply or if we want to apply for that money, we are set up with the U.S. Treasury portal to do that. So that has been completed as well.
Is that fine?
Pardon me?
Is that portal fine?
Oh, I mean, it's a little nerve wracking, because, you know, they want my picture ID, they scan it, so it was, yeah, we did complete it.
You're, you're in the system now, Doug?
Correct.
He's been in the system.
Yeah, yes.
So next steps are, we need to have some kind of a work session and identify what the projects are that we would like to fund.
Absolutely. Just to share with the commissioners, we are getting audited for our CARES Act dollars that we received from the state of Idaho. Eddie Bailey Auditors out of Nevada have contacted us for our information, our general ledgers, to take a look at how we expended the CARES Act funding. As the commissioners are fully aware, we are completely open and transparent, so we provided them with our, the initial reimbursement request that we sent to the state of Idaho, as well as our general ledgers that show where we expended that CARES Act dollars. So we are in fact getting audited by Eddie Bailey, and I don't know who requested, I don't know if it was the state of Idaho who requested that they conduct an audit. I have not reached out to any other counties to see if they are getting audited. I felt that it really doesn't matter if they want to audit our expenses and revenue. Please feel free to do that. And I explained to them that unfortunately, how we didn't, we weren't able to have a separate expense line for COVID-related expenses, so it is inter, it is within our general budget or expenses, and those expenses just came out of specific expense lines, so it is going to be a lot of work, but we'll provide them with any type of guidance that they want or any type of, we'll provide them with any answer to any questions that they have. But just to share with the commissioners, we are.
Doug, I'm not sure, you might know this, but it seemed to me like, before you were a clerk, Bailey used to do our audits, David and Duncan, before Jared took over?
I think that Mr. Zweigert was affiliated with Bailey, but I don't think, yeah, I think it was Bailey Zweigert.
Yeah, there it is. I think that's it, before March it was, or it was Bailey and Zweigert.
So just to.
Aside Bailey, the national?
Yes.
Firm, so I am excited to see that they're actually auditing books, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
As you are fully aware, we, we felt that the expenses that we made related to COVID were specifically related to COVID. We did not try to, I guess, expand the sideboards. We were really following the guidelines. So I'm extremely satisfied that the expenses that were made, the reimbursement that we requested were legitimate, and the expenses, you know, were, were within the proper guidelines.
What, what was the total of what we requested, roughly?
Commissioner, I can share, probably $120,000 out of our.
That's the number that I had.
Yeah, approximately. I think the first reimbursement was about $64,000, and then the second reimbursement that we made was about $45,000, so.
Might be some nervous people right now.
There might be, right?
Are you going to do cities, too, do you know?
I don't know. Again, I don't know who they were auditing, I just know that we were contacted to provide them with our general ledger.
Probably somewhat random.
Might be.
Process of some sort, but hopefully.
Yeah. The, as the commissioners are aware, we had an election last week that went very well, and I would like my chief deputy just to present to you the canvas of the ballots, the commissioners to ask my chief deputy of any questions, and then make a motion to approve the canvas of the votes, and I will turn it over to Gabrielle Natt.
Good morning, Gabri.
Good morning, how are you guys? So our election had four different taxing districts under it. We had the North Lake Recreation Water and Sewer, which was doing board members. They had two open seats and three candidates, so the people could vote for two people. And as you can see on the canvas of the votes, we have Mr. Parrish, Ms. Crump, and Mr. Summer Rec, and Mr. Parrish and Mr. Summer Rec won. Very low turnout. This one is, anyone who lives in the North Rec district can vote, even if they are not full-time residents here, they just have to be registered to vote in the state of Idaho, and they can vote. We had very, very small amount of absentee, only nine people, so we kind of expected a low turnout on the day of, since most people, since a lot of the people probably weren't in the area. So we only had 2% of the people who lived in that taxing district.
Ooh, wow.
Who came out and vote, only 64 voters, so pretty small. Then we had the McCall Memorial Hospital District also doing board members, so anyone in that taxing district could vote. We had Mr. Leonard, Ms. Cron, and Mr. Summer Rec run there, because Mr. Summer Rec lived in both districts, so he was able to go on both. And then Mr. Leonard and Ms. Cron won. I believe they were both the incumbents. The turnout in that taxing district was 15.8%. Shared the ballot with the city of McCall, which probably helped with its turnout, because it was on this, for the city of McCall at least, it had a lot of turnout on the library bond. So it was just a yes or no, if they wanted the bond for the library. We had a turnout of 33.6%. It needed a 66% majority, and it passed at 77.95, so. The last one was the city of McCall did a lot tax.
City of Cascade?
Yes. City of Cascade.
Said, said, city of McCall, I just want to make sure.
Oh, sorry, city of Cascade, nope. And they had a yes or no on whether or not to impose a lot tax. It had to pass by 60%, and they got 62.9%, so that passed as well there. Voter turnout was 16.7%. Don't know if I shared, yeah, I did, okay. So you should have all that in front of you, we're just asking that you approve the canvas and sign off on it, so the results become official.
Motion that we approve the canvas of the votes for May 18th.
Okay.
Move the second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Doug, you have something for us to sign?
I do.
Thanks, Chief.
Low turnout.
Off years.
You and Pat.
It's helpful when you're in the audience that you can see what time it is.
Anything else, Doug?
I do have one more matter. I apologize. Myself and Gabby will be attending budget and levy training with the State Tax Commission on the 27th, so we are hoping that they are going to explain the new laws that were implemented and to receive direct guidelines from them on how to handle the maximum, excuse me, the maximum amount that taxing districts can levy for, to get an overview of the property tax exemption and the other rules that were, laws that were changed. So Gabby and I will be attending in person to that training on the 27th, this Thursday.
So that's when you learn about the new construction at 90%?
We're hoping so, yes.
All of that stuff?
Yes, sir.
And then I have the final figures for the Health District. Got those Friday at that.
Yep, just wanted to let the commissioners.
Good luck on that.
Thank you.
Take good notes.
We will, yeah.
Okay. Prosecutor is not here. Sheriff?
Commissioners, the sheriff will not be in attendance.
She has two action items.
And she asked that I present those action items.
And we have those in your handout. The Idemia is the new fingerprint machine. The Idemia is the new fingerprint machine. Everybody get a chest, look at those. $3,582 a year maintenance. Those were in the claims today. I would entertain a motion to approve that Idemia software contract.
So this wasn't the purchase, this is just the maintenance, right?
That's correct.
What I just realized, did you guys get a packet? I didn't get a packet with all that.
It was from Gabby. And she sent two of them. And it was, if you want, it was Wednesday.
Perfect. I thought. I move that we approve the annual maintenance agreement with Idemia, Idemia.
I have a second?
Yes.
Move the second on favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Next one up is also an action item. This is to approve the Bureau of Reclamation contract for waterways patrol. And I think that's the same as last year.
It's not. It's actually an increase, Mr. Chairman.
How much more was it? 34.2?
I believe that in the past, we've only received, bear with me, approximately 9,000 from them, so it is a significant increase.
That's kind of good news. I thought it was 32,000 or 34,000.
Doug, does that just get put back into the waterways?
Waterways, correct. Yeah, that just offsets any costs related to patrol on the, on the lakes from the Bureau of Reclamation. We are-
It's just their portion that they help.
Correct. The sheriff's office is requesting an increase this year based on conversations with the Bureau of Reclamation. It is allowable. So we're submitting this application for the Bureau of Reclamation to approve or to review and potentially approve. And we don't know, in fact, if they are going to allow us to, if they're going to, I guess, approve of our increase. But based on conversations with the sheriff, waterways, and Bureau of Reclamation, we felt that it was time to increase our reimbursement amount.
So that would be a request for next summer?
Correct.
Well, Doug, on one of the pages they sent out, they have a price schedule. The actual, I'm reading this right, the actual cost is 85,500. For 150 hours of patrol.
That's correct.
Of that 85.5, they're going to throw in 32,000.
We are hoping for that, that, yes.
Doug, is there, so with these funds, because we have so many problems finding housing for those deputies, can we use this for anything specific to housing or, you know?
I believe, Commissioner, that those, that those funds are only allowable to use for specifically salaries. I don't think that they can be a portion to any other cause.
A lot of discussion about communication. I don't see anything in there sharing about housing.
I was looking at some of this, and it says housekeeping.
I saw that.
Yeah, so I was kind of going, I don't know what that means, but.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve this. I guess we'll find out if they sign one. Come on in, won't we, for the contract.
I'll make motion that we approve the BOR contract for the waterway patrol.
Okay.
Move the second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, and so I'm assuming, Doug, you'll get the two of us to sign?
I will, Mr. Chairman. Give me one.
Next item up is our treasurer, Gabe. Come on up.
And that's why I thought about the housing thing.
Good morning, commissioners and Clerk Miller.
Morning.
Morning.
Property tax reminder notices were mailed out early last week. And so phones started ringing, of course, as soon as those hit mailboxes, but nothing abnormal. So we're answering lots of questions. A lot of it relates to just, you know, people paying a day or two late back in December, and they might see a small penalty or, you know, little things like that. But we're, we're taking care of them. We're down to 23 parcels in, in tax deed currently. We're continuing to reach out and try to contact those individuals, give them every opportunity to understand where they're at and pay. The first of four required publications in the Star News will go out, will be in next Thursday's newspaper. It'll also be on the website, listing those parcels and the amount of taxes.
And that'll be public information. Can you tell me now, Gabe, is any of them from Camarick?
We certainly did have a few up there. I'm not sure if these 20-
Not from Camarick itself, from the home room?
Right, that area up there. I think we still have one or two. I think so.
Or did you hit it down?
Is that normal? It feels like there's, that's a lot. Because we've only had, what, two last year and?
Well, it's, it's, for this, this point in the, in the process, it's actually a little bit lower than average. So we, hopefully, will end up with one or two or, or so.
Or none.
Or none. That'd be great. And that's, that's all I have as far as my update from the treasurer's office. Do you have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
I don't think so. I guess we're good. Thanks.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we're going to move right on down to our agenda. Our next section is department heads, and the first one up is Annette. Good morning.
Good morning. We're starting to pick up. We've got 135 permits.
I say you're starting to pick up every week. You're just continuing, you're continuing to pick up.
We are, okay, we're continuing. I'll rephrase that next time. We're 45 permits out from last year at this time. We got people dropping out too, due to the prices of lumber and concrete shortage. I mean, we've probably had 10 to 12 people do that so far.
Really?
Yeah.
Are you seeing anything that is like under a $400,000 price point?
Not a lot.
Sheds.
Sheds, yeah, yeah. And speaking of sheds, at some point, we, we got to come up with an idea of how we're going to control the people living in them. I mean, they're advertised on the railers and I don't know what to do about it.
Doug, do you want to do a workshop next week or two and take an hour with us? And we can sit down and figure out a letter to send these folks that what they're doing is illegal?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
And you have a list, I'm assuming, of these folks, you know who they are? Well, maybe get with Doug, you get on the agenda, and we could sit down, perhaps even maybe write some kind of a, or give Brian a copy with a generic letter. If these folks, if they're a violation of the code, and just keep hooking them.
Okay, yeah, and we wrote them a few letters, and they all say, oh, no, we're not living in them. But, I mean, and they're not all, but some are. So we just, we just got to figure it out.
And I wonder if, I'm sorry, we should include June in on that discussion? Maybe we need to change the classification or something. It could be lived in, maybe that's a different.
Well, you know what? You probably need to push, turn your microphone around. I put all the microphones out toward the road.
Can't hear me?
And I bet you can't be heard.
That's good. I don't want to be heard. But I think that's the appropriate procedure right now. And then maybe we do it by certified mail, give it a little more seriousness. I don't know. Certainly listen to our counsel on that, what he recommends.
Okay.
Because it's going to get worse and worse and worse.
And I think, you know, we have a request for a code enforcement person working with code compliance, sorry, whatever you want to call it. So I think that that's going to drive the conversation as much as anything, you know, being able to work and actually find an avenue forward.
Yeah, okay. Okay. That's about all I got. And we sent the fee update to Mackenzie. She's supposed to get that on Facebook. I'm not sure if it's on there yet or not. It was sent to the paper for the code changes, which will be in effect May 27.
And we passed some new fees at the Health District Friday for the land stuff, septic inspections. And we dropped quite a few of them. So I have that information. I'll get it for you today. And they won't start, of course, until next fiscal year, but this is what's coming down. I think a septic permit went down to, oh, man, I'm going to say 620. Something like that. But I'll have those in my truck. I'll get them to you, and you make a copy for you, and you can kind of-
Okay.
See what's coming down the road.
Counties have to fund them now. You can't drop user fees.
Well, the code says that you can't charge more than what it costs you to do them. So every year it's different. You look at the number divided by the cost, and that's what you get. Plus, I think you're allowed a 5% admin adjustment to it. But it's actually kind of good news. It's a little cheaper to do a septic system.
Well, that'll help, yeah.
So not a lot, but a little.
Yeah, everything helps.
And remind me, and I'll get those for you, so you know.
Okay.
Okay?
That's all I got for you.
Okay, any more questions for Annette? Thanks. Have a great day. Skip emailed this morning. He has nothing to report. He's not going to come in. Melissa, are you on the phone?
Mr. Chairman, she was. I sent her a Teams invite. She was going to appear via Teams, but I don't see that she has joined. But let me just check and-
I have the prosecutor office back.
Oh, we forgot, yeah, the prosecutor's back now. Sorry, we kind of bounced over you. We didn't see you back there. So we'll go back and do the prosecutor now, and then we'll come back to department heads. Morning, Brian.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Apologize for my tardiness. I'm kind of doing double duty today. Had traffic court and went a little longer than I had hoped. But Brian, again, sends his apologies for not being able to report to the board. We are just trying to keep, keep things flowing the way that, that we want to keep things on track and smooth. One of the things that Brian asked me to, to inform you of and, and report and see if you had any questions is his intention to pursue a summer intern to help out with workload, particularly on the criminal side, to help out with the traffic court and some, provide some support on the misdemeanor side. So we're, we're hoping to get a good candidate that's either a recent graduate from law school or, or maybe even a 2L that can, can, can help out, so.
Do you have an office to put them in?
We will, we will. Office space is, is at a premium, but we will figure out a way to accommodate that. Maybe you have to make some arrangements with where we are currently storing files and things of that nature, but we'll figure out a way to make it work.
And then an intern, they just do it for no, no salary?
It'll be a summer intern. There is, we do have some contract dollars that's available that we would, would utilize to, rather than go and, and contract with an outside counsel to handle some of the work that I'm currently doing, we can utilize those available funds to pay a small amount for, for that internship.
Well, just for clarification, Doug, if we decided that we needed to pay or hire somebody right away, how does that process work? So everybody knows, for something that we have a budgeted for.
The first step is to work with Human Resources, which Mr. Nagle has done that, is to work with the Human Resource Director to identify, you know, where it would fall within the points and after getting the point factor analysis completed, providing it with the, putting it on the kinds and levels chart for this type of position. Once that is done, then the prosecuting attorney's office would have the ability to post the position, interview applicants for the position, and then hire that, that intern utilizing budgeted dollars that they currently have within their fiscal year 2021 budget. They do have an expense line currently that is funded, that is available, that they could utilize. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, do you remember how much was in there?
I was-
10,000?
No, it was like 35,000. Bear with me one second. I can provide you-
So there is a way to get somebody on staff and going right away? I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this intern maybe end up coming in full time later on? It's like a trial basis, or is that how you see that working?
Mr. Chairman, the, really, the, the value of a, of a summer intern is, yes, you get the, you get the work and the help during the summertime, but there's no better job interview than having a chance to work with somebody. So if we are approved to, for that extra full-time employee, I would certainly hope that who we would select as an intern would be a top candidate for-
Great.
For that position long-term.
Perfect.
There, there is 30,000 in the contracts, other expense line within the prosecuting attorney's office that could be used for this position.
Well, I'm glad we got it in there.
And then on the, on the civil side, things are, things are continuing, continuing on the same trajectory. There's been some, certainly some discussion between our office and planning zoning to work on some code enforcement. I've provided some, some example documents to send to. I think those are easily transferable over to the building department. I think that we can kind of work together with both offices using very similar process and very similar form going forward, just so we're all on the same page. A workshop in the near future might be in order for, for everybody to get the input from the board on how you would like to see enforcement handled. I have kind of my concept that, that I'm proposing, but certainly will make adjustments to however, however the board wants to see code enforcement handled.
Good, that's good to hear. So we'll just kind of wait and see when it gets agenda'd. Everybody sit down and chew on this one, see if we can figure it out.
Okay. Well, thank you again, and again, apologize for my, my tardiness. I'll be kind of in and out quite a bit today. I've got some other hearings on the calendar, so I'll have to be downstairs a little bit. So if you do need me, I'm here and, and available to answer questions if you've got any.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. Okay, Doug, did you get on the Melissa?
I did. She's just going to be sending an email update to the commissioners, so just to let you know.
So then the next person is HR, Pat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The short one always goes after the tall one. That's funny.
It's all good. It's all good. I'm kind of used to it. Let's see, workers' comp, there was a question about workers' comp earlier this morning. The, we have had a good moderate. It's going to change, and I don't know whether it's this year or next year, because we had a huge claim with the gentleman that had the stick go through his eye. And so that is going to affect our workers' comp rates.
That was last summer, wasn't it? That's right.
Yeah, two summers ago. It was two summers ago. So it'll probably be next year that'll show up on our moderate, because it's usually a three-year rolling. But that, that is coming up. Right now, it is pretty low, fairly low. We did have, the year before that, we did have a large expense for the person that fell on the dock, knocked himself out, hurt himself pretty badly. And that was three years ago, so that's starting to show up as well. So that's going to increase our rates. So we've had a couple of big claims that have been, you know, two and three years ago. So they will go up. Overall, our accidents and reportable accidents have gone down a lot. We don't have many that way. It's just that the last, we just had some, a couple of really big ones.
So how long does it take for those accidents to go off? And are ratings go back down, a couple, three years or?
Yes, three. It's a three-year rolling, so it'll be, mm-hmm. Yep, it'll be a while.
Well, it'd be interesting to know kind of what was three years ago and what it is now, Pat. If you have access to that data, it'd be kind of nice to see where, which direction we're going there.
Yeah, the, it's all on the moderate. I don't, you know, it's an insurance program, so they have their base rate. And then depending on what your claims are, is called a mod rate. Ours had been really low, like in the 80s. I'm anticipating it'll be one point something with those two. So I'll, I'll get onto the workers' comp site and send y'all an email and let you know where it's at.
Well, I appreciate that. I know before we had, well, we had HR, but we didn't have work comp claims being processed, and that was a real concern. And so that issue is over with now, and it's good to have you on board on top of all that. I just want to see kind of-
Oh, yeah.
Because that's a big expense every year.
It is, it is. And it's good to see, you know, when we're doing well, that we're rewarded. Honestly, the two expenses, the, the two claims that we have on here that's so high, both of them were kind of fluky type things. It's-
Yeah.
It's just stuff that happens, and that's why you have the insurance.
One was not a county employee even. It was just on county facility.
Oh, no, that one was different.
That one was different?
Yeah, and it wasn't a huge claim. What I'm talking about is, was a county employee. He's a Marine. He slipped on the dock and hit his head and caused a significant amount of injury. So that was probably three years ago.
Okay.
And then the other one was he was driving the back country, had the window open, sunglasses on, and still a stick got in his eye, and it has damaged the eye to the point that he's become disabled with it. Not good. So again, that, that does affect our, our comp rates, our moderate, so I'll look into that and get back to you. On HR stuff, aside from that, I do have the TTI training this week. I did a pre-certification week before last. It was so fascinating. I'm excited to get even deeper into it. And at the, the training that I did last week, I was able to use some of the stuff that I learned at the pre-cert, so I'm really excited about that. So that, that's happening. Recruiting wise, always, it's always like pulling teeth, but we do have two more. DMV is going to have an opening in the Cascade office, and we do have two people slated for interviews for that position here in Cascade. And then the prosecuting attorney, yeah, that is a, an internship. We don't ever want to do unpaid. It just gets too sticky with Department of Labor. So what, what Brian Noggle is proposing is $5,000 a month, and that's reasonable. It's more than reasonable. We did have three applicants this morning. Two of them might have enough information to even think about moving forward, but one of them looks really, really promising. So I'm excited about that one. That's one that could, you know, when we post, when you all approve the new position and we post it in October, could actually apply for that. So they would be ready for that. So, yeah, that was kind of exciting to see that. The road and weed tech, I have four applicants for that. Two of them are not qualified. They don't have the Class ACL that we need for the road department. One of them is really good, the one that we talked about, when you all approve the, the position, and he has applied for this position. We'll see if we can make it work. Hopefully by the time he's ready, you know, we get everything done, we'll have a place for him to stay. That's always a big challenge with whomever it is, so if they're from out of the area.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Does Steve need any additional people that are full-time just weeds? So the ones that are not qualified for the road tech, are they interested in just weeds?
Yes, in fact, one of them I moved over to the seasonal.
Okay.
I'll have to look at that other one, but I think the other one was not from the area, and so I'm a little hesitant to ask if they want that. But the one lady, the one person, yeah, she was interested, so I did move them over. So Steve should have her application and everything in his little hands now. So, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So Pat, do we have to send them to get an applicator's license? These new weed per people?
Yes.
They still have that requirement?
Unless they have it.
Unless they have it.
Yes. Definitely.
The weeds are doing very well right now, so we're going to need them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm lamenting because I can't get, it's hard to reach down and pull the ones in my little area. It might be roundup time.
I was going to say a long roundup.
Yeah. All right. Other thing is that the five dysfunctions of the team is for, I'm having someone from outside come in and teach that class. It's on Wednesday, as you all know, and I'm really excited about that. We have about 11 or 12 people who have signed up for it, which makes me feel good. So it'd be nice just to have somebody that's not me standing up there talking all the time. I think people get tired of me.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah. Then after that, anybody that wants to go deeper into the book, we will have a book club group on it as well. So we'll have a deep dive into it after that. And that was in response to the assessments from the elite leaders group. So, that's with that one. And then last, I really didn't think I had much to say until I started writing everything down. But just a reminder that next Monday I'll be remote working. I'll be out of the office from the 2nd to the 8th, out of, out of the state. I'll be back to work remotely on the 9th and the 10th, and then I'll be back in Cascade on the 14th.
So have your cell phone.
Yes, I'm available. I have loaded all of the critical forms and stuff on Teams, so I can grab them if I need them. So I'm available for whatever, even when I'm on vacation. I'm only me.
That's not good. That's terrible.
I know it is terrible. We, we're in that same boat all the time as commissioners.
We are, you're correct.
Yeah, you are. You know, I get it. I get it. And, and it's just one of those things. It's, anytime I've been to Department of one, it's the way it is, so. Nice just to get away and not have to worry about the day-to-day regardless.
Everything's going to run smooth and, and we won't even bother you.
Yes. It always makes me nervous, but but since I think June of, of 2019, it hasn't been too bad. So, any questions for me? Interns, thoughts?
I don't think I have any. You guys have any?
Here, I have anything for you.
All righty.
All right.
Well, you know where to find me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeremy's not here. I don't know if he's not available or what.
I'm wondering, yeah, if he remembers he's supposed to be here or not. Yep, that's mine. That's mine.
And then we'll move on down to the next one. Cinda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sherry.
Pat, just, you like this new thing.
So I would like to set, have you set a public hearing for the ordinance amendments that were recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission? The earliest agenda, the earliest agenda would be June 28th.
That works for me if we can get, if it's okay with Doug.
So I was, I'm trying to think about the stuff that we discussed on the road advisory committee. Can we get the A, B, C, D, everything else? The, is this the one that's speaking to subdivision ordinance? This has, right. Okay. It, it's been recommended for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission with that priority level C. Written into it. If you change that to a 1, 2, or 3, I don't know that it would be that big of a difference.
I just want to make sure that that work can be accomplished before we, we draft an ordinance that specifies a specific road standard that we don't have yet. So.
Well, I, I think that standard exists.
It hasn't been codified yet by the county, so can we?
Okay.
And we, we need to put it according to our legal counsel, not into ordinance, but into a resolution, so.
We can take that portion out. I don't know that you're going to codify. I thought you were going to adopt by resolution.
A resolution.
I'll adopt whatever you want to call it. I'm just stating that it needs to be adopted.
Okay.
You're going to send us that info?
So do you want to wait till July to do this, or August?
I would like a, maybe from Jeff, some kind of a timeframe from him that we can do this, so we could go ahead and put it on and then table it if we don't have it done yet.
I think we should get it on as soon as we can, and then like you said, if it's not ready, then let's table it.
Cinda, we have a 1 o'clock till 2. That is an hour long enough?
Oh, I think so. It's.
So that would be June 28th. If you can just send me an email to provide us with information on how you want it to reflect on the agenda.
Sure. So, we received a, a building permit from Snowden Wildlife. This is really a gray area, and we haven't gotten to the new ordinance, which will be effective this Thursday. They've applied for a 20-foot by 50-foot barn for their raptors, their birds. It kind of sits halfway between their 681 assessment and their timber production parcel. What they want is an ag building permit. And it is for birds. The category is a 681, which is a 501(c)(3). So there is no value associated with that parcel. I personally have no heartburn issuing this building permit because it is for animals. It's not for human habitation.
Is it a pole barn, steel building? What kind of building is it?
It's a pole barn.
Pole barn, okay.
So what's the gray area?
Is, it's not agricultural, silviculture, fruiticulture, villiculture. I mean, it's not a bona fide agricultural for-profit use. This is a nonprofit. But the use is for raptors, birds, and things like that. It's for the rehabilitation of the wildlife. So it's kind of a gray area.
Now, any problems doing it as an ag building?
It halfway sits on a timber production land.
What would the other option be?
They would have to get engineered drawings for their pole building.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's kind of a gray.
I'm market sharing about the precedent we set.
Well, as of, as of this Thursday, we have it all very well codified. But it's not published until the 27th.
You said half the building sits on each designation?
Yeah, it kind of goes across the, the property line, was my recollection. And I did not look, but I think years ago we issued one.
So what's Annette's feeling on this? Are you issuing the building permit? Okay, so what's your feeling?
1 through 7, right? Because it's a 681 nonprofit.
I think as long as they understand that this is for raptors and birds, this is not to park trailers and boats and that kind of stuff, that would be a violation of the intent. And I think if any other nonprofit there, they're not going to have birds, they're not going to have, that we know of, any kind of wildlife or commodity going in there. It would be more for storage of toys, and I think if we stress that with these guys, I don't have a problem with the whole building permit.
It says use will be for test flying rehabilitated raptors prior to their release back into the wild.
Are they going to have any, like, a, a room that does surgery or does repairs on these birds or anything? It's just a straight open?
Whole building.
Whole building, okay. I don't have an issue with it, Cinda, as a farm permit.
And as, as, as of this coming Thursday, I don't know that, you know, there'll be any sort of precedent set, because I think we got pretty detailed in that.
Pretty specialized request. I doubt we're going to see a lot. Would be too similar to this.
Right. If this was, you know, a house out here for Snowden.
Right.
Definitely, it would not be. This is for their animals.
I was just thinking of any kind of other use that would come in. I mean, McPaus with a dog run or something like that. I just can't think of who else would be.
Commercial.
So.
Isn't McPaus commercial? They're a vet.
They're nonprofit.
They're a 501(c)(3), but they would still, I think, have to get a building permit, no matter what they put in. You know, my concern is we've got this huge building. If we don't have any raptors, it's going to sit empty. So it ends up getting used for something else if they don't have birds for it, so.
You could put notes on here, absolutely no storage. Only for habitation of raptors and.
I like that idea. That work? Yeah, this is not an action item, so we'll let you guys make that call.
Okay. Yeah, and Thursday, everything will be different. But we did receive this April 26th, so it was under the old ordinance. The new one takes effect Thursday.
Anything else?
Oh, do you have anything for me?
Yes, he's good. Everybody's happy and so on.
Yes, we are.
You guys look like you're getting really busy. You're going to go to two, two meetings a month, or are you already doing that? Just going to go till midnight?
No, we don't start any new applications after 10.
After 10?
We changed our bylaws 10, 12 years ago.
Okay.
We don't start anything after 10. I suspect July is going to be pretty busy. We'll see.
See. All right, thanks, Cinda. Next person up is Larry, and then we'll come back to you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Great weekend for growing grass, right?
Yeah.
Yep, growing mushrooms.
We've started the process. The Boulder restrooms are painting those. I sent you guys an email on a response on the 674 Road, the South Fork Road. I've got, the response I got from the Crassell District was, at the very least, extremely vague. So I took another step with that and had Idaho Recreation Council look at it, and they sent a letter to them asking for the NEPA documents. Wellington, we've got a broken pipe out of the well. I've got somebody coming in tomorrow to dig it out, and hopefully we'll get it back up and running before Memorial Day. We had a PFC meeting last Thursday. Thank you, Commissioner Bingaman, for being on that. I've got a lot of concerns about what's going on in the coalitions right now. In kind of a short way, they've let us know they're pulling all the recreation projects out of their projects, and they're going to try to do recreation as a categorical exclusion. And with the promise they'll get down to recreation later. The problem with that is there also have a lot of, we're concerned about the road situation, unauthorized roads. Rather than looking at them for recreational opportunities, they're talking about obliteration or closing. And we don't want that, so we made a very strong statement about it, and we're going to do it again at the next meeting, too.
Larry, can you do one of those for the Boise Coalition as well? Because we're in hot discussion right now, the Forest Service, on how we're getting treated on that coalition as well.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of strange, because both the Boise and the Pitt did receive funds for signage, and, and I brought that up and said, oh, yeah, we've got. But I also remember four years ago, hearing exactly the same thing, that they received a bunch of money for signage, and it never happens. So we're going to push really hard on that. I, I'm not sure, quite sure what else to do about it. Another concern that I noted in this meeting, I didn't bring it up, is the stewardship funds got brought up, and as you guys know, these forests were originally made to harvest timber, and 25% of their receipts were to come to the county, and that's what was supposed to pay for our roads and our schools. Well, they changed that to stewardship, so we didn't get the 25%. They kept it. Once a year, we receive a report on where those stewardship funds go. I just noticed in a report I got from the, another outfit, that some of the areas, they said the funds were going, they've also applied for grants to pay for those projects. Stewardship funds, since I really believe they are the county's, I think we have a responsibility to make sure they're being used properly, so I'm going to follow up on that. And I've talked to a few other members of the, the coalition, and they're going to ask the same questions, including Commissioner from Adams County.
Well, the issue with the stewardship funds, that I remember the discussion on, was that they couldn't spend it all on that particular job site, so they wanted permission to be able to take some of those funds and use them on another job site. Now it sounds like they're going clear out of this forest or out of the county and using them throughout the state, and I think that's a problem.
Right, because we were hoping they were going to use them over in the Crassell District when we had our Big Creek Yellow Pine. Some of the, which, the next time I talk to you guys, I want to talk about Big Creek, Big Creek Yellow Pine, because even though we suspended that lawsuit, that lawsuit's never been closed.
That was on Sugar Creek.
Sugar Creek, the whole project, really. Yeah, we've never closed it, and we have yet to see a single, we, so we've got agreements, they're going to build trails, we got agreements, they're going to make campgrounds. Nothing has happened, and I think maybe some motivation might be in, in effect. We may just call for a, a meeting, one more meeting, Big Creek Yellow Pine collaboration, and have everybody sit down, have the Forest Service give us a report on how they're doing. Now that way, everything's clear. But I, after, I mean, as you remember, that was eight years of collaboration. And after all that, I, it, what a sad thing to see that just go away, and the county spent some funds on it, a lot of other people did too, so. Anyway, I'll be following up on that.
Larry, on the stewardship funds, do you have a document you can send us that we can read on that also?
I will send you everything I get on stewardship, we should get another report next, next month. And it'll give us the line items. The, the sad part was, um, we were hoping that the whole collaboration could have a comment on that. But what they did is they just sent it out to all the district rangers asking for projects. And the number one project was, um, um, to pay some people or something, it was kind of crazy.
I'm working with Crepeau's office on the SRS funds, and I'm wondering if that might help support.
I, I'll get you the information on stewardship. It, it bothers me because I still think that is county money. But, you know, either that or give us the forest back, or the other.
You have last, the last one, the last report?
Yes, I do, yeah.
If you could send that out, that'd be great.
You bet.
Report to us.
Um, of course, Memorial Day is coming up, so we're quite busy getting ready for that. Uh, so we have a grant, uh, that we've been working on for four years, you know, we were told we were going to get it four years ago. And in that amount of time, the original grant was forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, the cost, the equipment went up to fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, it's a difference of seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen. Plus the freight has changed and everything. Um, I talked to Brian Harris on the Payette, and he let us apply for a, a late rack grant. So we sent in a rack grant for seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. I've already called a couple of the members of the grant, everybody's willing to go, I just got to get Brian, uh, going on, getting that committee together so we can get the funds, and that'll make up the difference. I don't want to come back to you guys and say that I'm short, because I, I, that should be paid for through grants. But first, I got to get this grant signed. This is with IDPR. And, um, it's a grant for a snow drag out of Wellington. And the total of the grant is, uh, original grant was forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollar.
So this is the acceptance of that grant.
This is the acceptance of it, without spending any of the funds, I won't spend any funds until we know that we've got the rack grant through or any of this stuff, we've got to have it complete. And it took, it actually took us almost a year just because of Made in America, just to get all the proper documentation that the steel came from America. Because the plant's actually in Canada.
What was the deadline for the rack grants this cycle?
Say it again.
What was the rack grant, uh, the rack grant deadline for this cycle of the rack grants?
Two weeks ago.
That's what I thought, it just passed, so we should. Got that in.
Yeah, well, we, we didn't.
They should be working their way through that process pretty quick.
Yeah, we didn't get it in on, on time. Um, I called Brian, he said, no problem, send it over to me, I'll put it in the system. And, um, evidently he hasn't got enough, well, there's, what was there, 30 days for everybody to get their rack grants in? And I think we're going, this fall, we're going to get another opportunity to apply for rack grants. And we're starting to work on those right now.
Okay, so we have an action item here, we need a, um, motion and a second to accept the IDPR grant for the drag.
I move that we move forward with the acceptance of the IDPR drag. No drag grant.
Second that.
Moved in second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You can hear me?
Larry, just for my minutes, it, the snow drag will be used at Wellington or Francie Wallace?
Francie Wallace, thank you Doug.
Thought we were getting another one for Wellington.
This one's too big for Wellington, this thing's a month, this thing's 14 foot wide. That's a beast, only that, um, special piece of, of equipment, that challenger can pull out, or other stuff.
All right, thank you, did we vote on that, Doug?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else?
No, anything for me?
Um, yeah, do you send us the stewardship stuff? I would be, you're very interested in that. Do you know, do they break it down by forest, by chance?
No, no, it's just by, well, just by, on the Payette only is what I'll have.
Oh, you won't have anything for Boise? So I'm, I'll, I'll handle that, I'll get ahold of Jake.
I've always wondered why we didn't get no, any notifications on stewardship funds on the Boise.
Okay, I'm going to call Jake.
And I'm going to start a 10 in the Boise on Zoom too, now that we've got things settled down on snow grooming.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning Jeremy.
How are you? Um, just some updates on a few things that the IT department has been working on. Internet at the U of I was upgraded, so they're on a faster DSL circuit. Um, and I did have a question, do you, do you know about how many people you're thinking of, uh, moving over there?
Uh, it's just going to be Gerina.
Okay.
As far as I know, there's no one else works in that office. And they, when we met with, oh, I can't even remember the guy's name that manages KWP.
Sam.
Sam, they have two back rooms on the north side on the bottom floor, he said, we'll help clean all that out, and we, we can move her right in there, so everybody will be on the first floor.
Okay, on the bottom floor then, okay.
Do you know what kind of an increase they've seen? I called and talked to one of the ladies over there, and she said that the, the modem had been upgraded, but they didn't see a great increase, other than it quit dropping their calls.
So, Zipley, and it's probably, not just Zipley, a lot of companies do this, they don't have a great track record of letting me know when they do things. So they had done it, and I didn't know. And I went over on Friday and reset up all the wifi and, uh, um, everything on the new modem. They were using the Kelly's Whitewater modem, which was the same as the old one that was there on the really slow circuit, so that's why they probably said they didn't see any real good increase. So, um, I'm hoping, um, if we give it a few days or a week or something, I'm going to go talk to them and see how it's, see how it's going.
Okay, so what I might do is maybe next Monday, I'll get ahold of you, and we'll find out if we're all good. You can check by then, and then I can, we can pull the trigger and have SoCal Conservation move over there. We can start on that house.
Yes, all right.
Awesome.
Um, Tamer's still working on finalizing the website, um, there's been a few delays, the, um, they, I think they have kind of a small team, and they're working on a lot of different county and government websites, so, um, it's going a little bit slower than we'd liked, but we're getting really close. We got some scanners in on Friday to get to the assessors, the rest of them, to get their scanning program up and going. June had asked for a couple more at the desks so they could scan as they work, instead of trying to have somebody sit in there, shit, and fill out their, they had time to do that, so.
Awesome.
We're willing to do that, so we got some scanners for them to, to keep that going. Um, we installed a new fingerprint machine for the sheriff's office on Tuesday, so we can get away from the old ink system, and it's been working, uh, well so far.
Great.
Haven't had any problems with that. We also installed a new interview room camera at the sheriff's office. The one that was there was really grainy and washed out, and, uh, we purchased a new system, got that installed and up and running, and it's working really well. And, uh, the other thing I have is on Friday, early Friday morning, um, we changed our public IP address to a Zipley-owned IP address, they wanted all the Frontier IP addresses back. And that was a really quick change, it went really well, no, uh, really quick downtime, and everything came back up and running, and.
So what does Frontier with, do with all those old ones, sell them?
Yeah, so ISPs, they usually own, they bought their own blocks of IP addresses.
Oh, okay.
So when Zipley took over Frontier, they let everybody keep their Frontier IP addresses, uh, during the transition. But at some point, Zipley had to give those back up and give them back to Frontier. And so they had reached out to myself and the clerk's office a few times to say, hey, you guys need to get changed over to a Zipley IP address, and they gave us our new block, and I did that on Friday morning, so.
Good, good, so that's done too.
It's done too.
These are all good.
Okay, I have some batteries, and I have a call in with, uh, Atronics to, um, get audio at this table working, because I know it's.
Perfect.
Good.
It's not, um, it's not great, it needs to be a lot better for road meetings, and for planning and zoning meetings and things like that.
Is that new microphones, or can we use what we got in there, or?
Um, I have a call with them this week to find out if they can, uh, just hook up these flat ones, which I thought they were supposed to do when they did all this. Uh, see, figure out what happened there, um, if they won't work, then work on getting some high dynamic or high, um, some better microphones, because those, even with those wireless ones sitting there, those wireless mics aren't really made to pick up things from far away. So you need something a little more, a microphone that's a little more specialized or made for picking up from farther away to replace these flat ones that are on the table.
Good.
So when they were actually doing all of that, they talked to me about those, and said that our old system was probably going to have to be updated. So we may have to get a bid on updating what was down there, they told me it'd be five to eight thousand dollars, they thought, to upgrade something, so. That was their comment when they were setting it all up.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to them and find out what.
Perfect. If they were just doing these, I mean, these would pick up more than what they've got now, but, mind you, people.
Yeah, yeah, those ones pick up pretty good.
If you haven't pointed at your face.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for Jeremy?
Nope, thank you.
So, when we transferred over, um, Microsoft, we were going to, there was a further transition that needed to happen, we were waiting on that, that, like all the teams that, that, um, I have access to it, a lot of people don't, they have to go in through the web, where's our next upgrade points for our office?
So our next plan for that was to get, um, the actual Teams desktop app installed on all of the county computers. And, um, that's, that's something that I will have that kind of, oh, by the wayside a little bit, and I'll let Tamer get, get that, get that going and get that installed, so people can start using that.
Not a big deal, I don't think, you know, unless they're really using Teams, but maybe prioritize those that need direct access to it. So we can start using that.
I will.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thanks Jeremy.
Take a brief.
Hey, we're going to take a short break, and we'll see you guys here about ten, five minutes, six minutes.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
I'm eating, who brought me lunch or breakfast? Me too.
I finished the fair book and I got all the chambers on it.
Nice.
Just got them, I'm still trying to get used to them. Oh, well, thank you, never been, never been, I've never been called attracting my grandsons and said I look like Harry Potter's grandpa. Well, that helps a lot.
Harry Potter.
Yeah, it's funny because that's what he dressed up for Halloween, and he looked like a little Harry Potter.
Elter, you're going to have to put a stop, stoplight in at your road down there to get, get across the highway there?
You know, it's crazy, because what it makes me do is I work in the evenings, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes in the afternoon, you can start like at four, but, but you just work.
If you could get a wireless, uh, feed from when they let people through the canyon or when they're stopping.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, there's about, oh, probably 400 ton, and I divide it by three, so there's a hundred and some odd loads that have got to come across. It's a challenge.
I can't imagine, I mean, there's no downtime on the highway anymore. Like I said, right now with the construction, you know, downtime is when they got this traffic stop on the south end.
But it seems to quiet down after about 5:30, 6 o'clock. But not on Thursday or Friday.
It was, um.
Or Sunday.
Coming out of Boise, like, uh, once I got to Horseshoe and headed north up the river, it was contin- continuous stream all the way up to the construction.
When I went down Thursday for my house district on Friday, I got stopped where the county has the property there in that corner, in Round Valley. That's where I was stopped waiting to get through.
In the north?
From the north, and it took two times to get through it.
The stop sign?
The, uh, traffic lights on the construction.
They weren't using them, they were just flaggers. And it's like, oh my gosh.
Last time too, but there were so many cars, oh my gosh.
Okay, guys, come on up, we're going to do buildings and grounds next, Scott, so. Hey Scott, how are you? You, you sent us something, didn't you?
Yeah, I sent you, uh, email, kind of going over, uh, the walkthrough I had with the fair board down there, uh, on the 12th. And stuff, and, uh, just to kind of go recap, when we got there, um, Alice and I went kind of through the barn that has our tractors and all our panels and stuff in it, we, uh, also went through the next one building there, um, that they use, I believe YCAT uses it in the flower, people use it. And kind of discussed, I guess the assessors park their vehicles during the winter, and then when they pull them out, they kind of leave a mess in there, and, um, kind of like to see if maybe they could help clean it up.
Oh, that's the silver building you're talking about, or the next red one?
It's the boy who runs the site, went to the arena.
Okay.
It's just with all of the barn, I would say when you park their vehicles, we, we clean them all out, right, so we polish them every year. And because they're cars. We need to figure out how to balance them.
Is it, is it county road department cars, or is it?
Assessors cars.
Assessors cars.
In the one building.
Well, it's motor pool, right?
Motor pool, yeah.
So it's, it's Jeff that's putting them in there.
But, anyway, so we went through that, and then, um, then the group, we kind, we went through the, uh, the commercial building, uh, kind of looked over it. Um, getting the chains and latches that hold the windows open, make sure they're all in working order, and kind of, the building needs painted terribly bad, that building does. Then we went on to the fair, uh, fair board's office, which is kind of basically turned into a storeroom. We did go out into the bay, and, um, I don't know, the gentleman with the red beard. On the board there going around with us. He works for Malvey Construction, or, or, anyway.
That's Carl.
Carl, yes, yeah.
Carl, you know?
Yeah, he's kinda got a.
I don't remember a beard, but yeah, maybe.
Yeah, well, just made me need to shave, I guess, I don't know. So, you know, he requested that we put some type of, um, on the second story loft where they store stuff, some type of removable handrail. Um, I guess they had, I guess, that would be two years ago, since the last time they had a fair, a gentleman volunteer fell off of there and was injured. I guess the county had, whatever he said, his medical expenses, so we wanna get something up there. And then we were looking, they have a, uh, display board out there, and they're ha- having an issue with the road department backing their vehicles in. And punching holes through it with their tailgates and hitches and stuff, and. There seem to be almost, there's three rows of trucks in there, and the front row near the deal was back a good ten, fifteen feet from the front, so I don't know why they're backing in that far. So, the board, the display board must probably need some repair to it, where the hole's been punched through it, stuff, and then. And then from there, we, um, went out, and then, um, Commissioner Mopin had to leave, and we were sat there, and then, um, Toby Olson showed up. And he kinda took things over at that point, and, um. And so, his first request, he wants is, um. From, it would be the west corner of the Hogpen Alley, the post right there. He wants a chain link fence, put clear across up to the highway, um, with two gates, big enough to push snow through, was his first request.
Why, why a fence there?
I don't know why he wants one there, to be honest, he didn't, you know.
Sure. You need to come up to the mic, though, so everybody can hear you.
They're all working today, so we're, Casey and I are gonna do our best, but, um, that fence is, it's all kind. It's tough to regulate people that are going in and out for admission. It's been a little bit of a free for all in the past of how to regulate your numbers and how to make sure admission is being taken care of, and. They can control the beer garden a little bit better, you know, kinda have a little better resource, so. With that too, with a gate, you would have different seating too, you could eliminate some of the panel, I think you'll. Be talking about whatnot, and maybe add some additional stadium seating, help that for more.
On that north side of the arena?
Mm-hmm, because they would be moving those chutes.
Yeah, well, I haven't got to that part of it yet, that's another, that's another request down the road.
So, the reason for that is.
Yeah.
There, um, when we went through this originally, there are not enough seats to actually make a. So, if you can't put enough people in those seats to pay for all of the expenses, we need to either look at expanding the rodeo. Um, and that's one of the reasons for that fencing, is because they're right, people are just coming in from all, I mean, people just walk in from the highway and from the railroad. Ameritidal, and, you know, so there is nobody that's paying that, so we've been talking about, you know, wristbands, or how, how do you control that environment a little bit more? And a fence is one way to start that control, anyway.
You know. Does the fence include the bathroom, or is the bathroom north of the fence?
The bathroom's north of the fence.
So, the beer garden, last time, was north of that bathroom, and they're gonna put the beer garden back down towards the arena? And it's been a couple of years since I went, I didn't go.
I have to watch that too, because in the past, it looked like Bud Light sponsored 4H, and that was not good. So, you know, just, she, she'll have the licensing, because it's Jenny that owns, but yeah, they'll, they'll put it in.
I was talking to Carl, that where the EMT booth is right now, there's the, um, cantina right there. Um, that, he was talking about fencing that area off of the buil- beer garden, which would be behind that fence.
That's kinda the next thing you request, if we just tear down the EMT deal and demo it and do away with it. Um, and then take the, it would be the north, the northwest and the southwest ends, take the solid fencing down. And replace it with chain link fence, so you could put additional seating around those ends, so people could see through it. Was, it was the next thing on, you know, the next request they made. Um, they'd also like requests that we demo the loading chute, um, because of the liability, someone. One of the trucks at one time or so was backed in, and if you're facing the chute, the big eight by eight, uh, uh, has been broken half. And that they've scabbed, like a two by eight, don't have to hold it. So, they'd like to demo that, get rid of it, and purchase a, a portable loading chute, um, to be used there, and possibly over at the scales or something, is. You load animals in and out, so that was another request.
And the EMT, can I just, they do have a plan for that, right now, the ambulance is just there on site. That is situated correctly, and they weren't using that space, just to make clear, we do have emergency services.
Yeah, but I guess that, that, that stand hasn't been used for years or something, it's just.
It's not, it needs to come down.
Yeah, it just needs, yeah.
And people are standing on it during the fair, so.
Yeah.
That's, it's, it's pretty rickety at this moment in time.
Demo that, and like I say, do the fencing, um, his next request was that we take the, the roping chutes and the associated pins. And go kitty corner and put them in the southeast corner of the arena, and take the catch pens and stuff in that corner. And move them to the northeast corner, is what he would like to do.
So, that's a request, okay, from the fair board, so that is on the top. So, that is a want, not a need.
Okay.
I'm most interested in this year in what needs to be done for the safety and health of people using that facility.
Okay, so I'm just kinda going with, so after that, um, we went down to the south end of the arena. And there's a drain ditch, and it's partially piped across there. You'd like to have that piping continued on over towards the railroad tracks, and, um, then extend the stock pins there. Back out over that, uh, and create, um, more, enlarge the pins, like that done. Um, uh, let's see, take the kinda, I guess, of the, the fairgrounds, it would be the south, um, southwest corner up there. Kinda that flat, um, enlarge that, and bring sand in and make a warm-up area for horses and stuff, there's what they like to do. On that portion, portion of it up.
Right below the title cup.
Yeah, right, just, yeah, right across.
The issue, well, it's not an issue now, but we, when we took that down years ago, was so that the 4H folks could park their campers in there. We didn't have access to KWP back then.
That was kind of because of the heat. And kind of some different issues that brought up, like, oh, what's the future of what we're gonna park and what to do. Really, the best or the safest railroad crossing is behind the rec district. And then it goes, and then there's a, kind of an entryway that we've made behind all the stocks, so that it's a safe way for families to get over to the animals. Otherwise, you're kinda going all the way around. So, I talked to the rec district, we went out there, we had a long working relationship, um, we're talking about ten to fourteen. Families out there. And to, they were worried about, and fifty at that time. So, something that we've done in the past, so that was kinda nice.
Awesome.
On the other side of the.
And that helps, because the showers are there for them. So, that's a good thing.
But then.
We didn't even have that go, we didn't even have that.
So, then where the title company flag ground is, you could use that for a warm-up?
And that really is the best, anyway, over time, we've seen this, it's gotten, um, bigger, little kids, right? I don't like the safety aspect of that either, they don't need to be back there. Friday, Saturday, night.
Okay.
The other thing that you should know, Scott, back there, when they dug the line to the rec district behind the, the, uh, on the south side of the arena. The water line, city water and sewer over, they hit a whole bunch of hot water. Near, it was only down like fi- four or five feet, and it was eighty-seven degree water. So, you have that in the back of your mind, and on the end of that arena is a huge.
Geothermal water.
Hot water source, it was bubbling up out of the ground.
Right, it's really close to the surface.
Very close to the surface, I was with Ben Wellington when we put that stuff in, I'm just amazed, and there's a heating source for a whole bunch of folks.
So, there's potential to take that water line, Muppet Mike said it up on top, maybe it gets covered on the top, as opposed to dropping it down.
Well, there's already the ditch there that a pipe could lay in, I don't know if we'd have to take it, you know. But that was, he wanted to see that, because what, the pipe is buried to one point, and then the ditch continues on. It's about halfway across where the pins are, um, and then it turns into a ditch again, and.
Do you know how many feet of pipe?
Um, to look at it, probably sixty to eighty feet.
And is it galvanized, or is it plastic?
You know, we, we didn't go actually over and look at the pipe, um, uh, and see, just, is it a plastic, is it a bell and hub, a black plastic?
Oh, it's black plastic, okay, so we could either get that, or we could get some eighty pound or hundred pound regular. Irrigation pipe.
Yeah, get some bell and spigot or something, we could just, you know, put together there, and we could band it on, adapt it onto it. And let's see, and it's kinda the final request, is they, uh, I, we didn't go up into the announcer stand, but they said the floor needs replaced and that. So, I haven't, you get a chance to go up there and get into that, but that was about the extent of, uh, the request at that time, things.
Not sure, had you mentioned the swine.
No, that was in the 4H, you know, when, when I, you know, I met a couple, you know, about two weeks earlier. Like us to, um, purchase enough materials, um, to build eight to ten swine gates, to replace gates. Um, they, they started kinda on, on the west end, and they came, came down about halfway and replaced those gates, and. The, you know, now kinda need to complete that. I did call C and M last week on materials, I made a materials list off after measuring the gates. And we're looking about seven hundred dollars worth of materials, um, two by eight by ten foot is thirty-three dollars right now. And they only guaranteed their prices for that day. Um, I also asked about a piece of OSB, because of, on the very east panels by the wash station, we'd like to put something up there to protect whoever exhibitor has their pig in there. You know, from getting splashed and wet, and, uh, the price last Tuesday was seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents for one sheet. Of five eights OSB.
These are probably our bare minimums, you know, for just, I really don't feel like. I just breathed in, every sheep.
So, you have a list now of materials you need, I take it?
Yeah, for, for the swine gates and stuff, we also talked about in the alleyway between the sheep and the goats, um. Uh, just like to bring in, you know, maybe a dirt-sand mixture that we can actually put in the individual stalls, and possibly part way out to the center. And then some drain rock down the center of that, or if, you know, it rains, um, some way to channel the water away from going back into the pins and stuff. Um, that we looked at, um, also, there's miscellaneous hardware, um, hinges, you know, double-ended snaps, chains. Um, looks like we need a couple of the two by four Joyce hangers, um, put up on the pigs, some of, where they put the two by fours across on the alleyway. Um, some of them were in bad shape, so just, you know, miscellaneous hardware, we need to get there and stuff.
So, did you also price the chain link fence, if we're gonna do from?
No, I just, you know, we just went to twelfth, I haven't really, and I guess, I got some questions, um. On just what Buildings and Grounds responsibility is, um, there's nothing in our budget for the fairgrounds. I have a, their budget this year was thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, so. Is that money for the fairgrounds to do this, buy the materials for the 4H, and do all, you know, purchase a. You know, mobile chute, or is, you know, just. Kinda talking to Scott, historically, Buildings and Grounds is just taking care of the bathrooms, the showers, the water and electrical, and the fair board took care of everything else, um. I really don't have a crew to take care of the fairgrounds, and here too, so, um.
That's a good question.
How does, how does this work? I mean, they have, you know, thirty-some odd thousand dollars, is this something they should have started on last October? When they got their new budget and started working on this, or is this, um, they kinda gave me a deadline of seventeenth of July to get this stuff done, on top of everything.
So, that's a good question, Scott, and it's a larger conversation than what we've had, and that, that's why I put this on the agenda.
Yeah, because I'm not quite sure where I play in here, you know, and stuff.
When I took over being the liaison for the fair board. I had questions, that, that exact same question. So, these are our fairgrounds, as the county. This is not the fair board's buildings, the county owns these buildings. As far as the health and safety of people owning these buildings and the public coming into these buildings. We have to make sure, in my opinion, that we take care of these. Because if somebody gets sued, it's not the fair board, it's the county.
Yeah.
And some of these things are health and safety issues.
I think the reason you haven't seen any of it, because it's just, nothing's been done.
Well, yeah.
Or donations, or.
And they have questions, you know, when I started attending these meetings, they're like, well, whose buildings are these? Who is supposed to be taking care of these, and this is a conversation that needs to be had. So, in my opinion, after doing all the research, working with the county, pulling all of the county history, all of the state statutes. We provide the buildings and the fairgrounds, the fair board holds the fair. Now, counties can look at it differently, we can, um, they are a taxing entity. We collect thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand dollars worth of funds, we need a full budget. We always need to know exactly where their funds are going, what they're being utilized for, uh, what profit they're making from the fair. So that together, we can come up with a budget, to make sure that the fair is running smoothly, and the county provides that. They historically have not been profitable, so they're coming back and asking for additional funding, and that's without taking care of anything. And so, that's, that tells me that we need to look at our full fairgrounds down there. We need to expand seating, so that we actually can become a profitable fair and rodeo. And use those buildings for additional events that we can actually charge for. So, I am not saying that this is building is in grounds, but I do believe that it is the responsibility of the county to provide safe. Facilities to hold our fair and rodeo. Now, if that means that you're the coordinator for that, then that means that that's, you know, it's part of our assets for the county. And I think we need to hire some people, or work with the fair board to see if there are parents that can come and help. If we provide the resources, you know, do you have some parents that can come and help take care of this? That's my opinion, I wanna hear from the other guys.
Well, I know with the way it's always been done in the past, and it doesn't mean it's the right way to do it, I can tell you that, but. In instances like this, they, you, they would come to us, say, we need five thousand dollars to do these projects. We would, in our hearts, if we had it, we would give you the money, but the fair board and the parents and the leaders and the kids. Which I think is the most important part, actually built whatever they wanted to do. It was not up to Buildings and Grounds to go in there, but I think in this instance, something that's gonna be libelous, like the railing. In the third building, the floor of the.
Yeah.
I'm reading, those are kinda things that we need to make sure are, are up to code, so we're not liable of paying anybody's doctor bills. Uh, like the new gates, we can buy the materials, but the fair board and the leaders and the kids built them and put them in.
Well, I'll just say, so do I go buy the materials, and then when I put a claim, do I use the, the maintenance and repair? Line item on the fair, fair board's line to, when I put my claim in to pay for it? Is that how I?
I would assume that would, how it would work, but the other issue is, I know the fair board rents a tent. For the, uh, root, kind of the show of the pigs and the auction and all that stuff, and I think that's seventeen thousand dollars a year. So, part of that money comes out of. Seven thousand, part of that thirty-five was used for that as well. When Brian Heinz was on there, we talked about buying our own tent, so that we didn't have to do this every year, after six years or seven years. It doesn't cost you. Right.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I hear you, just, just part of it, and on the 4H aspect of it, you're right, I do have a lot, that will always happen. And you know that on those gates, the materials, and I could, I could probably get that help, especially with the timeliness of what needs to happen this year. People gotten pushed, you know, until we could get anything done, so I do have. I'm gonna put that all on Scott to say, here, do the gates, and you're right, historically, for 4H areas, that we can feasibly fix safely. That, that's absolutely something I think we're very, um, and help with. I think when we're talking about these bigger projects, like the arenas, or an open class building, or just the general maintenance of the fairgrounds. And that's a difference, that's, that's not an expectation I would expect the 4H family.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, and, and even painting a building, I remember one year, all the 4Hers showed up, and we painted all those buildings red. So, that was a community effort kind of a deal, and that's what these kid, young kids need to learn, is that. Sometimes you have to work without getting paid, that's just the way life is, but.
We do plenty of that, and I did just get five gallons of ink, because this really should be stained, never put on that wood, not ink. Never put on that wood, not paint. And then, just so you know, too, the fair board matching grabs in the chamber. Or not fair board, fair book, eighteen hundred copies. A thousand dollars, get those printed. Oh, they did. Same price, but yeah, that's paid for too. So yeah, we're ongoing with contributing monies back to it or helping.
I think the one thing that we haven't done, that we have to do, is we have to have a budget that comes through the clerk's office. It has to be, you know, you guys sitting down with Doug saying, this is what we need this year. This is what we need to levy for. Because historically, we've had one amount of a levy and that was just it. It was kind of given. And we have to find out exactly what the budget is, what those funds are going to be used for so that we can levy appropriately to support that area.
I agree a hundred percent with that. And, and it's kind of like everything else in this county. We're going from small town, laid back kind of an attitude to all of a sudden, we got to get everything up a little classier, a little better looking facility. So.
That was my overall opinion. The fairgrounds to me, the arena looks pretty rundown to me. Um, I guess, I don't know. I grew up on a court horse ranch feedlot. I've built miles of fence. I hung a lot of gates. Every gate down there is dragging on the, you gotta pick it up and drag it. It's held together with baleen wire and twine. The, the general overall appearance is not very good to me, you know, is what, you know, I looked at, you know, just the time I spent down there. I need to go down and spend more time, you know, walking around there. But like I say, just the general, if you just look at it in general, it looks rundown.
Well, and I think a lot of it.
Stands, stands look really nice.
A lot of it is.
From there across, looks.
Yeah, is the plywood on the, the arena that needs painted. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to proved. I know one time we discussed with the city and at that time, and I'm not committing them now, but at that time they, we could use those grandstands down at the softball field. Move them in, do the fair, do the rodeo and then move them back. So we could kind of share some, and that might be some of the fair board could approach the city about if you do decide to open up some of that fencing and put chain link up, then that's perfect. Let's go get a couple of grandstands and we can increase those numbers. But I think like Sherry says, long term, we, we need to sit down with the fair board and let's do an overall kind of look at the whole design and layout.
Yeah.
And see what that would take.
Yeah.
So we need a, we need a capital improvement plan for down there. We know the large expenditures. We need to work with the road department and figure out, you know, what, how we blend those facilities for now into the best use that we can. Instead of putting a tons of money toward the bathroom because that's a continuing conversation. There are avenues to bring in some more mobile showers and restrooms.
Talked about tearing those down and, and and then I guess any smaller events, then whoever individuals putting that on would have to rent the porta potties or something.
Porta potties.
And stuff, but for our, our main event for the fair, bring in one of the big trailers with the bigger trailers with the showers and the bathrooms. We have a water and sewer connection for them. And, and then it's out of the way the rest of the year.
And you know, my, my long-term feel is, is that there was some conversation about moving the fair. I'm not, I'm not in favor or not in favor of moving the fairgrounds. I think it's really incumbent upon the fair board to look at their long-term strategy. As we grow as a county, we're gonna have more and more people that want to experience the Valley County Fair and Rodeo. So if the road department remains there, they're locked in a little tiny box in the corner. And that's not gonna work. If we can get the rodeo out, or the road department out of there, then that gives them more opportunity in the future. But it might not be the right location at the end of the day for something that's larger, but that's not a conversation for today. That's the fair board looking at their ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan to find out exactly what they want to do to grow in. You know, we are going to expand. This county is growing in leaps and bounds and people want to experience that. Right now, we can't even do any marketing because it's so packed in there during the event that you can't invite anybody else to come and join us. I want what's best for the fair and rodeo and I want their decisions to be heard by the commissioners. I want us to work collaboratively together to create the best event we can. This is the Valley County. And when I walk onto those fairgrounds, it breaks my heart that that is the face that we're putting out there to people coming and joining us at the fair. So I think we need to do what we can. I think we need to prioritize needs versus wants. So when I've walked it this year, I've been told the EMT building or the EMT platform needs to come down. It's unsafe. The announcer's floor needs to be rebuilt because it's unsafe. And if you look at some of the other things, a lot of this is basically chains, latches, that kind of thing. We're not gonna get a fence installed.
No.
Probably this summer period, but that's a, that's a want, not a need this year.
Things I, I kind of looked at we could do were the EMT has to get the chute down, buy a portable chute and get the hog pins and the, and the sheep and goat area taken care of. But I think that's because you're never gonna, we're not gonna get the fence down and get a fencer up here.
No.
To get the fence redone. It's just not gonna happen. And relocating and reconfiguring all the chutes and stuff, not gonna happen.
We, we, what was it? Three or four years ago, we moved all the chutes from the south end around to the east side so that everything came out in front of the audience and there was a work party showed up and they got it all done in a couple of weekends.
I competed in the arena, but five, six years I've competed there.
You were mutton busting?
Yep. I never won, but.
Never won, but you tried.
No. I will say my bow riding career ended there. I retired there. After my, that was my final wreck and I said, that was it.
I was gonna say, I think as far as what, you know, what I'm hearing, I, I've walked through there too and I, I agree with everything that was said. It's, it's in shambles right now. We've got a lot of work to do. Overwhelming. So not trying to overwhelm either, you know, the two groups, especially not, you know, your, your job right now, Scott, but I think that we, we need to before the fair this year, look at the safety concerns, like we said. Seems like there's a good opportunity for some collaboration with the kids and parents and things like that. I mean, to me, I hear like the hardware and those kinds of things. That's great. Like give kids some screw guns and let them go to town, put in hardware where we need it.
Yeah, that's traditionally what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got the tent done and now we just.
Yeah.
We needed money for the wood.
Yeah, as I say, I think, you know, we, like I said, we gotta take care of the safety concerns. So maybe if you could turn that list into the safety concerns that we need, priorities, these have to be done by July.
Yeah.
Get those done and then, you know, maybe we need to come back in and revisit the bigger picture later in the summer, but maybe work with these guys to see how, what could, what could the families help with? What did they want to help with?
Yeah, because then we, you know, what's it, in August is, is rodeo. We have, we still have some window left, you know, and see what's left in budget, in the budget for the fairgrounds and see what we could get done. You know, up to where we can't work there anymore. And then, um, I guess through the winter, you know, sit down and strategize what, you know, what we're gonna do with the, with next year's budget and, um, see what we can get done. Because like, right now, it's too late to do everything. And there's not the money to do everything. You know, we're gonna take seven thousand out of the budget for a tent loan. And then I don't know what other operating costs they have to put it on.
So the tent would be their expense. That's part of the actual operations of the fair.
Yeah.
So anything that's temporary like that would be your guys' expense. Okay? I mean, we're talking hard, the hard assets of the fairgrounds. So if you guys want to, you know, purchase it, whatever, we'll have to look at a funding mechanism to do that. But we're just talking the hard assets.
Yeah.
Not, not anything that they do to operate that fair.
Yeah, so, so with the capital improvements, we want to do up, you know, this year, I mean, you know, the purchase of a mobile loading chute and it's gonna come out of this budget though, is, or are we gonna look to take additional funds from somewhere else?
What I might suggest is you come up with a kind of a final figure. This is what it's gonna cost for the chute. This is what it's gonna cost for some of these safety repairs. And, and I wouldn't have an issue with even a temporary fence to control the crowds. And so you have one access point into that rodeo so that you can collect those funds. It doesn't have to be an eight-foot chain link fence. It could be something else.
We could, we could put a temporary snow fence across there, yeah.
Come to us and say, we need eight thousand dollars or we need ten thousand dollars. I would be willing to, to help pull that out of general fund or wherever we got a pilt and get that stuff done, get it bought. Even the chain link fencing on the arena so that you can use those new, those other grandstands and, and get more folks in there. I think that's very possible this year. If we can get the clubs involved and the leaders and the fair board and everybody's gonna have to, you know, spend some weekends down there and do it. But we've all done that in the past.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then the only other thing I could say is, um, on the vehicles in the buildings, you know, that saves those vehicles a lot of.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
And it's kind of a smart thing to do, but maybe part of that condition is that, um, you know, we can get the road department help to come in and clean that stuff up.
Or if we, you know, if we purchase a sweeper for the front of our skid steer, we could, you know, sweep it out.
Didn't we do that?
No.
Do you have a sweeper, Jeff? Yeah, I'll bet it's dustier than a.
Yeah.
I can tell you all that.
You been there, done that?
I put on masks, that, with all, with everything I can, of course, whenever you come.
So Jeff, before you got here, there was a conversation and I've been gonna call you. So I went down and looked at where you guys were parking. You guys backed into the set of stairs that we bought last year with their vehicles. They backed into all the display stuff and put holes in the display boards with the stuff. And you guys got fifteen feet in front of those trucks. Go look at it. So they're not able to even move the ladder because they've got basically the hitch is through the ladder. Um, so we need you guys to move it up. Okay, go look.
You might want to go check that out.
Okay. Commissioners, just for, for clarification from the clerk's office. So in the years past, the commissioners are fully aware of what has been done is basically uh, two times a year, the commissioners have prepared an invoice and submitted a contribution to the Valley County Fair Board in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So for this year, are we going to be doing the same thing? Or are we going to be having those, I, I guess the clerk's office, expend money out of the fairgrounds and buildings for these type of improvements that Scott is presenting? Or will the, uh, Valley County Fair Board be responsible for those after they receive fiscal year twenty twenty-one's contribution? Because we have not paid, uh, the anything for fair and fairgrounds and buildings this year.
So I asked that they gave us, that they provide us invoices and that we will pay them for any expenses that they currently have. Yes, out of that fund. And secondly, I've asked for a budget so that we know what needs to be spent this year. And I don't know historically, please, I don't know historically where those thirty thousand dollars have gone, so.
So I printed up the budget two meetings ago and gave it to you, if you remember. Here it is again. So historically, I rounded, I averaged the last three years of fair. Advertisements eighteen hundred dollars, alcohol expenses twenty-five, entertainment twenty-five. As you can see, you go down. That's where that thirty-two thousand dollars has gone. Two thousand nineteen fair or rodeo was forty thousand dollars and they made thirty-two thousand. So they're losing money. And just to put the fair on, that's thirty thousand dollars from two thousand nineteen, or the last three years.
This really helps a lot. I appreciate this because I remember one year, I don't know, four or five years ago, that they had grossed about eighty-three thousand dollars. We looked at a budget back then and I thought, wow, they should be having a gold star thing. What is going on here? And we didn't know where the money was going. We just didn't know. So this is gonna help a lot. It looks to me like we have way underfunded any repairs or maintenance.
Right. So that's just the average of the last three years. So the stuff Scott's talking about, our thirty-two thousand dollar budget, there's no money to do anything. Like the crow's nest or the hog's nest or the, or the gate. So to say that that money is just expendable for repairs, that's not the case because we need that money for open class barn, the purity, all of that things that goes into that meat of fare.
So no, I think we are going to have to, you know, all the money that's in there right now, the invoicing that was coming in was like for belt buckles and there were some things that.
So that's the second page. It brings you out your fiscal year so far expenditures. And what our account balance is, is down at the bottom. So right now we have thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty.
And that's because we gave them the money last year and there was no fair. So they're starting a little bit ahead this year simply because they didn't have the expenditures from last year.
There will be some extra money this year. Let's just say the fair process, it has the last average of thirty, a thirty, let's just say about a thirty-one. There will be some extra money there. But we still need thirty thousand.
And you still have, you've got fifteen thousand right now in the general ledger here. You have another payment coming. So you have thirty thousand for this year's budget also. Okay. But personally, again, this is my one vote. Buildings and assets need to be paid for by the county. And the fair, the actual operations of the fair needs to be taken care of by the fair board. So if we, if we need to take money from pils or the general fund in order to do these repairs, that would be my vote.
And that's my vote too. And I think we should try and do it this year before the fair. I don't think we need to wait and do a capital improvement and let's, let's get started now. I'm willing to do that if you guys are. It depends on your leaders and your four Hers and.
When you say that, yes, I, I mean, I can get some help down there. It's not always the same with the moms and dads are both working. I can get some on help on weekends, my dads and a few parents, but I just, it depends on how expensive it is. Who wants to do the repairs? Let's say I'm the four H portion. They have a couple. All my sheep and all that can be repaired. All the fine pens, if I can get enough help, I can get, I can get all that, the materials, I've got all the paint brushes, all that. Really for the four H, our passive to that, other than Jeff and the passive, huge help. And I'm not trying to, he was able to dig that line in between the sheep area so that the water does have a and then he's helped me move a couple back there. So that we know what we're talking about. We don't, it's not easy. It, the rainstorm.
It always rains on the fair. Always does.
Yeah, you know, one year.
Always does.
Well, Scott, if, if my vote would be, you know, see if C M H can do some of this stuff. If they're already working for the county and doing some other things. Or, um, Castle Mountain, or if, if there is a local contractor that's willing to go in and, you know, take down some of this stuff. I understand the fair board's position. I have been there now for eighteen months. And every time they call a workday, two people show up. So they are not getting the level of support that there has been historically in the past. And so that, that's just the unfortunate realities. And that's, I'm afraid that's why we're starting to see a decline in our facilities. There's just not that level of support.
Kind of sad because when we, when we did it, I was on the fair board for seven years, we'd have two dozen people show up and it was a matter of finding something for everybody to do. No more cowboys left.
And that's why it's important to keep this.
Absolutely.
To continue to feed these youth that want to.
So important to keep the agricultural, you know, portion of our community.
Can we start a plan today that come in with us, here's what we need and we'll look at subsidizing that budget this year? And then the extra thirty thousand you got, hopefully we can, we can just kind of float that through and see where it goes. I'm certainly willing to do that and it sounds like Sherry is too. I don't think we can wait another year. I think we need to get started now. It may be even somebody to paint the arena. I mean, if we need to have to contract that out, then let's look at that and get that done.
We got a good painter. He's out here, tell him to work after.
Let's see what we can do. I mean, yes, they've given you a deadline only because they have to have it done by then to hold the. But so let's see what we can do before then. Let's see what we can do after.
Well, and I would get back with them and the fair board says, here's what we'll do, but I need you guys' help with these certain projects. And the temporary fence for now to control crowd, I don't have an issue with that. That's pretty easy to do.
Drive-in T-Post, but no fence up.
Whatever, yeah.
It's just, you know, the upper end by the highway is gonna be a little harder to control, but I don't know what you guys have for security.
Yeah, well, we have seven hundred dollars budgeted for security. We'll see what.
We'll see what that is.
Who, who provides the security?
He'd hire a couple of people out.
So, you know, when we can do that, the crowd control, you know, put a demolition gate there. Get the E M T down, get the chute done. For the hog pins.
And I would contact D M B for, see if they would donate a loading chute. D M B has donated a lot to fairs over the state. And they may make us a heck of a deal on a loading chute. And for some advertising for them. So, but I don't, not saying, you have to do that. I think this is all kinda shared responsibility here. But you gotta do the safety stuff to keep, keep us protected that way.
And Scott, we don't wanna burn you out and we don't wanna burn them out. I think that's a problem sometimes when we have these volunteer boards, the work is so huge and nobody wants to do it. You know, I mean, they wanna put on a great fair, they wanna continue to keep kids engaged. But when you look at having to man, manage all those facilities, I wouldn't volunteer, I'm not gonna lie. I mean, that's, that's difficult, but I wanna burn you out either. So there needs to be a healthy balance here somewhere. That, you know, you're the coordinator and helping them, you know, figure some of this stuff out, but, yeah.
It's down there with their families and what gets done on that Saturday or the week before, it's pretty amazing. And all that coming in like.
Well, and Jeff may be able to help you with burying that ditch in the back. He may have some covert somewhere that he's not using. Go down and finish that up and then we can expand that way. It's kind of a shared deal, but I don't think you necessarily gotta be totally in charge. I mean, if you need help, let us know and we'll see what we can do to help you out. Okay?
There was an electrical issue last year. It was like ten thousand dollars to fix some electrical something.
It's too much going on for, for what we've got, um, done down there. Needs to be operated.
And so.
Jeff, I thought we got that all done.
I'd ask that to be put in the budget for this year. So that increased.
We put all the water lines in.
Was the electrical upgraded? Last year I was told at fairtime that there was a ten thousand dollar upgrade for Idaho Powers bid to upgrade the electrical into that area. I'd asked that to be put in the budget, so I don't know if that ever got the budget or not. But we need to do some electrical upgrades unless they have been completed, and I have not heard that, so.
Did you do anything different?
No, it's not, it's not quite done. We're waiting for the waterproof connectors. But the, I mean, you can run the loader back over this junction box now. The wires are up there. We're just waiting for the waterproof connector. Wires are all pulled. That, because actually there's no power right now to the bathrooms or showers.
Keep in mind that we may need an electrical upgrade in that area, so put that in your budget. And I was told it was ten thousand dollars per Idaho Powers bid.
And I think it dealt more with the vendors. They had more issues with pop and breakers than anybody else was a vendor.
So we are, we are trying to fix, in the showers, there was a pressure washer. Long, the sheriff used to wash their vehicles up there. Attempting right now to fix it. Backside.
Oh, interesting. Well, I know there, Brian Hines, who used to be in the fair board last year or year before, gave me some information on C X Ts with showers in them and you can get a lot of grants for those. And I thought, well, maybe we can use that someday to replace that bathroom down there. Because last time I was in there, it's like, I don't think I would touch too much down in here. It's kinda scary deal, but.
And Mary can start looking, I mean, Cambridge got a beautiful fair building some way.
It would be like attached to a stadium too, like when you come out.
That's what the C X Ts are. They make them like multiple, you know, multiple stalls and showers and the whole nine yards.
Mary can look for a fairground grants.
In regards to the budget, I would just like to finish and say that I will provide our QuickBooks report every month to you.
Perfect.
You guys can start seeing where everything's going, if itemized out amounts. Hopefully that will help build a better repertoire between the county and the fair.
Where did we leave it with us paying the bills versus you guys paying the bills?
The fair board would prefer to continue to pay. So that's why I propose that I will give you an after-year bank statement and QuickBooks report of our balance every month. But it's clear and you guys can see what's going on and there's nothing.
Doug, we probably need to go ahead and expend those funds then and send them their, their amounts.
If you'd like me to send them to you, Sherry, I don't know, but.
I think to the commissioners would be appropriate, Casey.
But we'll go ahead and, and send on the check for the fifteen thousand nine hundred, whatever it is. And we are gonna be voting on next, like I, I told you guys, but just so it's on record. We are gonna do a full fair board audit, a financial records audit. It's about a five thousand dollar, so be prepared for a phone call from Zweigert and Associates with all of their requests. And we will just do a, an audit and make sure everything's the way it should be. And then we know going forward, we'll have all of your reports. And all of the conversation, uh, can be behind us as far as what the financing is.
I make sure that you give me my number when you close the Verizon cell phone to the fair board.
Great, great news. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving on. We're running a little late.
I just got one more question.
Oh, do you have one more thing? Okay?
Well, is it Doug, um, Mrs. Picard, she called you about using the property up there?
She was unaware that the.
That Crystal had reached out from the police department?
Correct.
Okay. So what they wanted, what Crystal contacted me, she's the code enforcement officer of McCall Police Department. They'd like to use our old recycle area right there for June fourth and fifth to do their collect brush. They'll have it monitored. Someone will be there monitoring it. They just wanna use it for those two days and then that'll be it.
Is this like a fire wise program for the city?
Yeah, that's what it is. So she, I didn't really feel I had the authority to say yes, so I wanted to ask you guys what you felt about it.
Scott, that's on the agenda for eleven forty-five, just to let you know.
I won't be here then, so.
I don't see an issue with it, but we gotta vote on it first, so.
Okay, just let, you know, could you let me know and I can pass it on to them?
I'll let you know.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for all your hard work on this.
Okay, Jeff, come on up.
And then I get some for, for Scott's clarification, Commissioners. Scott, do you mind coming back up to the microphone? My apologies. So for the, the maintenance, the, or the needed maintenance that the commissioners have identified, how I have it in the minutes, is that the commissioners have committed to expend funds out of the general fund to assist with needed costs of the maintenance of the Valley County fairgrounds. So not to.
For this year.
For fiscal year twenty twenty-one is what I, uh, inputted, so.
Major priorities.
I, I guess I just wanna make sure Scott is aware what those items are from the commissioners.
Okay. So any purchases I make for like the hog pins?
Would come out of the general fund.
T-Post, fence, snow fence, any of that will come.
Submit a claim form and we'll process those.
Okay.
And then add to your budget for twenty twenty-two, the larger expenditures that you anticipate for next year.
Well, I think we could also, we could also boost the fair budget too.
Yeah, 'cause I, you know, I don't have any line item in my budget for the fairgrounds.
Well, it would be.
So would it be included in my total?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, out of four nine, four nine four.
Four nine four, include it into that, okay.
That worked.
Sorry to interrupt, Commissioners.
All right. Soon everybody's clear. Thank you. All right.
Jeff, will you go look at that building, please? And there's gotta be a happy medium somewhere. The guys are just backing too far in. You got room in the front.
We can leave vehicles parked outside. I mean, that's.
Now we're asking.
Plenty, plenty of room, plenty of room inside, but they don't have to shove them so far back.
It's, okay. Uh, we don't have any action items today, so, um, new paver arrived Friday.
Is that a lease or a purchase?
It's a two-year, two-year lease purchase.
It's a lease purchase.
Yeah, I put a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget for this year to buy a used one. Found a brand new one for one ninety-six. So I'm gonna expend the one fifty on it this year and then get forty-six thousand in the budget for twenty twenty-two and pay it off.
So I got a DocuSign thing I need to sign.
That is exactly what that's for.
We didn't know if it was a lease or a purchase, but it's a lease with a purchase option.
It's, it, it's the lease.
So we do need to get that on the next week's, or.
Well, I, I'm talking to Chad Allen, my sales rep, because everything was supposed to be in person, signed in person. So I don't know what this DocuSign thing is. He's in a meeting right now, so I couldn't talk to him.
Without much money, I think they should come in here and we should do this in person.
Well, they usually, they usually come down to the road department and I'd sign my part and then I bring it up here and then you guys sign your part. And this DocuSign stuff is, I, when I seen that, when you forwarded it to everybody, I was like, oh geez, don't click on it. Just probably, but then I started reading and it said E three eighty-five paver. I was like, oh geez, that is for us.
Well, and I didn't wanna sign until I got your approval and.
Yeah, I wouldn't sign nothing yet because I'm trying to get everything in paper form still.
Okay.
It's just seem, it's, I don't know, I guess I'm old fashioned enough to where I just want every, I want a piece of paper in front of me.
So we'll try and get on next week's agenda and we'll approve it.
Commissioners, you guys are, actually are not meeting next week, so it'd be June seventh.
Well, that's right, Memorial Day. Is that gonna be too late?
Shouldn't be. Chad's coming up with all the other paperwork Thursday. So, and I'll just give them their, I'll turn in a claim for the one fifty.
Was there any value to the old one? Are you just gonna surplus it?
I'll probably just try to surplus it, but it's probably not worth it except for scrap.
Sell it for scrap.
But somebody might, somebody might pay us five thousand for it. I don't know. Hasn't moved in three years.
Might be worth advertising just to see. Somebody might want parts off of it.
Yeah, oh, we'll definitely throw it on the auction block for a couple of weeks and just see what we get out of it. We might get scrap price, we might get a little more, who knows? I mean, somebody might want that screaming Detroit motor in it and the hydraulic system or the tracks, who knows? Okay? We're starting today on the Warm Lake Road slides, those big debris slides up towards the top. I drove up there Thursday and walked through them. Most of the snow's melted, but the amount of timber in them is just, it'd be really nice if we could get some IRFO money from the Forest Service to help clean up the mess from the fire, 'cause that's another deal that now every year, now that all the trees are dead and all they're uprooted now, every year we're just gonna have slides in the same area, but.
You can't, you can't put them over the edge. You have to bring them in.
We can put them over the edge there because there's not salmon habitat or any of that other stuff. But the problem is, the biggest part of the slide is, one big slide crossed the road twice.
On that switchback.
On the switchbacks. So most of the timber ended up on the upper road. We toss it over the side, it's gonna end up on the lower road again. So, or it's gonna be a lot of shuffling back and forth with the three twenty, just finding places to. We don't wanna pile anything because then I'll get in trouble for making it too easy for the firewood cutters. And there's restrictions on that road for three hundred feet from the road to cut firewood. And if I, if I make it easy for them to get to, then, I mean, I, I can talk to Jake over here at the Forest Service.
I was gonna say, is that close to one of those pullouts right there? Isn't there a pullout right below that? That's what I was gonna say, is you know.
There's kind of a pullout on that corner.
Maybe check in with Jake and just say, hey, can we use this as a special?
Special use.
Make a deck right there and then.
And that's what we did back at Stibnight a couple of years ago. We just, they gave us a three-year, whatever, free firewood. Still gotta get a permit, but they, they cut a bunch of it up.
Folks to clean it up and we're not just getting rid of it there.
And a lot of nice, I mean, it's all about eighteen inch, sixteen inch diameter and a lot of it's red fur, so. I, I would say put it to use, but that's not my call, so. Usually they just want stuff scattered out through the trees so it doesn't look like it's been piled.
Sure. When are you, when are you guys gonna be doing most of that work?
Starting today. I'm hoping to have, hoping to have.
Try to call Jake at lunch and see if.
If you wanted to try calling.
Potentially do something along those lines.
Yeah. Yeah.
I thought he was gonna go get his chainsaw and go up there.
Well, I have my chainsaw.
That's why he wants it piled right there.
And that'll be a race to that one, believe me.
That just seems like a waste, you know, you guys, the trouble that it's gonna take you guys to take it down and disperse it versus making a, a pile somewhere and letting people have at it that need it.
We won't have to haul nothing out, but it'd just be a lot easier if we could just, we gotta make sure it's safely decked so people don't get in there and they start cutting on this one and then this one falls. I mean, it is one big pile of jackstraw down.
I saw some of the picks, yeah.
It just, just walking through it, it's like, oh my gosh.
Why we, why can't we ask the Forest Service for money? I mean, can Mary see if there's something out there that we can go after? We're clearing up a mess that they create, then.
It, it was a natural event.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they didn't really create the event.
And that's just part of any road, I mean. Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, when Dave calls Jake, he could ask him if there's some money available through the, through the IRFO funds or something to, IRFO's emergency relief funding opportunity or something like that. I can't remember what it's called, but it's, it's fire mitigation money that kinda left over after the fires. That's how we put in these big box culverts in Bear Valley and stuff like that. It's just emergency relief money.
Usually they have some left after a fire for that, so maybe.
Maybe. This, this fire, when was that fire? In oh seven?
That's what I was gonna say. It was in oh seven or something like that.
That's probably gone.
It's probably gone, but it might be worth, I mean, all they're gonna say is no.
At least let us, let us plow.
Do you have any kind of an estimate as far as what, what your costs are gonna be to get that thing cleaned up? 'Cause it's like three different spots, right?
It's gonna be two, two pieces of equipment, a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour for ten hours a day. I'm, I'm hoping we'll be done with it by Thursday, but I don't know. So, two thousand, twenty-five hundred bucks a day, so five, be close to ten thousand dollars probably, just ballpark figures.
Even if they covered half of it, it'd be nice.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's where we're at on that. Uh, we opened up Seesash Monday. Warm Summit Tuesday, very minimal. He was over Seesash in three hours. Full width, wide open.
Is High Valley open yet?
High Valley opened, yes, it's open. Um, it melted out. There's, thing is, there's enough of those side-by-sides running around now. If they just keep that crust broke up, melts instantly.
Can you get a camper over there, a long camper to go to Sage Hen?
I mean, I'm going firewood cutting, she's going camping.
Yeah, I, I don't, we don't maintain the road to Sage Hen, but you can get one up, up from Smith's Ferry. As long as you know who's, as long as the driver knows how to pull something long on a mountain road.
Have you been down into the South Fork yet since?
Yes, I was down there last week and I'm going back in again tomorrow.
Anything big happen back in there this year? I mean, we didn't have much water, so.
No, no, it's nothing, nothing, no slides, no, just normal rock migration and torpedoes falling and.
Uh, did you get the memo that Boulder Road is open? We were gonna go back up and take a look. You were gonna go back and take a look at it?
No, I did not know it was open, so.
Yeah, it's open all the way up to, to the meadows.
I'll run up there this week and take a look at that and get that on the agenda for you guys to discuss. Okay? Um, soft spot repairs, we'll start on those hopefully next week, but my big machine's up on Warm Lake Summit right now, so. Only way to fix them is to dig them out, fabric and put new material in there, otherwise next spring they're gonna be worse.
Did we talk, Jeff? So, um, somebody was mentioning that Thunder Mountain is like the only bypass. If something happens on one of the bridges or something's stuck in Cascade, Thunder Mountain's the bypass. Is there any funding available for that to improve that road since it is like a mini collector?
Um, that's, I think that's, I don't know, I have to look on my I T D map and see what it's rated at.
Okay.
It's probably a minor collector since the highway's right there. So Lloyd Court would be considered a local collector, Thunder Mountain would be, or Thunder City would be considered a minor collector. So there's no big major grants for it, but maybe there's, you bring the bypass in to mention, that's very true. I mean, maybe there is something out there. very true. I mean, maybe there is something out there.
I mean, even if there's an accident, Cascade is stuck, there's no way around it.
Well, that's where everybody goes when they got the highway closed at 4th of July parade.
Exactly.
It's a messy, dusty.
So it's just something to keep in the back of your mind, cause I think if, you know, I mean, if Midas does go in with our labs or whatever, somebody, you know, we're gonna have to improve something on that side of the road, just in case something's going on in Cascade, but.
That's, I never thought about that.
I think it's gonna get used more too, especially if something does go in. People are just gonna, you know, say, I don't wanna drive through town, I'll go quick shot over here.
Yeah, it's not a quick shot through there if you obey the speed limits.
Just gotta get up, up the plane on those bums.
All I think is just making sure it's passable, so.
Yeah, and there's quite a few soft spots on that road too that are.
I'm sure Simplot's been looking at it to haul cattle and.
Yeah, remember who, who brought that up last week?
He can get a semi across it, I think, right now.
Yeah, the bus isn't even going down it, it's picking the kids up at the cutoff road. They advise them not to.
Let's see if we can't get a grant for that and see if we can improve that road at all.
The issue with that is the 290 degree corners.
290s and we don't have, we don't own a right of way on that road. It's an easement.
Can we improve an easement?
Huh?
Can we improve an easement?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that works, but the easement is so narrow that it won't really allow you to go out without buying right of way.
Is that a 40 foot easement or?
Uh, it's 50. 25 foot from center, that's why the fences are, well, just like Hasbrook Lane, that's an easement. That's why people down there complain about the snowplows breaking their fences, but.
Um, I'll give you the road if you need something from me to make that permanent. You can have it. And we, uh, we got smart and put the wires on the other side of the post, so it's a lot better now.
Okay, Thunder City. Epstein Bridge is still moving forward. They knocked their price down, but we, so I owe them the 26,000 that we agreed to pay them. I'm gonna have to pay them another 11,000 on the engineering side to just keep this thing moving. Which I've got it in the budget and that's why I have that big chunk of money in the, in my engineering line item, just for these unforeseen deals that pop up.
Why was it so much more for engineering, you know?
Cause they're engineers.
That wasn't part of our grant, right?
There, there, the grant was $140,000 to cover engineering and design. Now, the engineers, they, I'm not gonna say they go overboard, but they go above and beyond sometimes from what I think. I mean, they're, they're doing borings back there and everything. They're, they're gonna make sure that bridge does not fail. So their prices came in a little more than what we were getting from E D A. Uh, surveyor's heading back in there right now. He'll be in there two or three days getting surveys and drone videos and pictures and stuff and they'll, that way they can start trying to figure out where the bridge sits compared to where the right of way and maybe we can put the new bridge next to the old one. That way those people aren't landlocked. We're looking at a lot of opportunities.
Yeah, make sure everybody gets a car out there before they tear that one up.
Yeah, yeah. Is the U T V event happening?
Haven't heard.
I haven't either. Last, last part of July and I.
I got an email updated.
They're still advertising on Facebook, but.
I think they're moving forward. I mean, Judy was gonna, the mayor was gonna get all of the correct permits in place.
Okay.
Last thing we heard that she was working on that and.
Okay, cause nobody's contacted me yet, so I was just, I, I don't know if Picard's opened up his parking lot to let the pickups and trailers over there?
No, no.
Where are they gonna park?
Good question.
Okay, so we'll just plan on that still happening.
I need to rope off all your area, protect where.
As I say, be ready to put up a lot of.
Well, I, I talked to the two girls here that day. I go, you can't block the buildings, you can't park between the buildings, you can't park behind the buildings. Fire code. Don't block the fuel pump because the police officer's wanting to get in there and needing fuel. So hopefully somebody gets ahold of me here in the next month to get this thing straightened out. Other than that, questions for me. You gonna get ahold of Jake?
I can't think of anything.
Okay.
I'll reach out to that event and, uh, one question that I have, so the subdivision ordinance, the A, B, C, D, whatever it was that we discussed, um, Cinda is gonna be moving forward, that ordinance that references the C standard roads um, on June 28th. Do you think that we can get solidified the A, B, C, D road standards before then?
Um, yeah, I'll just have to sit down with Cinda and get something a little more solid than C B and all other roads.
Right. So you might want to make that one a little bit of a, of a priority on your list so that we can get that solidified and pass for resolution before we reference it in an ordinance when we really don't have anything that has been solidified.
Uh, okay.
If not, we'll push that back a little bit, but.
I got one other thing. Um, gentleman bought the lot at the bottom, a little donner that accesses off of Stonebreaker. Um, he came in this morning, we're gonna have an issue with I T D plowing Stonebreaker and people not blocking his driveway. Talked to us last winter before he came up. Now he's gonna be a full-time resident or getting ready to build up there. I sent him to I T D because they're the ones that plow that little 150, 200 feet off the highway and to give the fishermen a place to park. The, we gotta make sure, well, we, but somehow that driveway does not get blocked. It's the old railroad bed.
That's the guy that had the old barn that finally fell over, that lot?
No, that's, that's, he actually took over, uh, gestern's job. He's the new ditch rider, the guy that lives in the bus there.
So this is the guy that's building up on top?
On that knob right there on that.
And then, okay.
Yep, had the power ran across the road. Yeah, they're.
Cinda's also looking at a P and Z use there, so a land change there on that same section, so you might talk with her.
Doing what?
There's somebody that's bought some additional ground and talking to P and Z about their, what they're gonna be doing there. So that's gonna change.
Oh.
And change that whole use right there.
And go back to you guys if you wanna accept the road or not.
Then last time I talked to Teresa on the, us going on in, career down to Sugarloaf, she didn't want that whole thing plowed at all. Didn't want any of it touched.
No.
It's like, well, then there's no reason for us to do it.
They don't want it plowed into the Sugarloaf campground because then people are gonna wanna use the bathroom and once again, you got a cleaning and vandalism issue there to fault toilet.
However, Jeff, I think it's coming.
It's coming.
That's part of the recreation programs we need to look at long term, but.
We just need to find a plow.
Keep breaking records out here.
Jeff, I got the map pulled up. Could you show me where those two slides were on the map?
Yeah.
I got it pulled up right here.
Oh.
Maybe they need to gift that campground to the town.
It's, it's that.
And when it's all built, that will take it.
The big, big corner, so there's the top corner.
Yes, so.
Yeah, I came across out of that.
One slide came down, this is our normal slide area.
Yep.
And usually that's just small. And the bigger one came down right here.
Oh.
Doug, did you get an email?
This, this whole drainage is stripped, stripped now.
I know, I was gonna say, I know there is room right in there that you could file stuff up.
Yep, right in here. Yeah, it's.
I don't know if there's anything down there or not.
A little bit hit this lower road and went down into the draw bottom, but it's a, they'll be through that today easily, but this, this one up through here.
It's like that we probably should give that to Brian so that he can speak with them regarding some of his concerns.
Tell those guys to get some photos. They're cleaning it up.
I'm sure they will. Yep. Yep, that's where it is. I mean, you still can't go. I'm gonna find out at Johnson Tricks how far I can make it up there when I go back there tomorrow, just to do my early inspection and.
That'll sure make Tom happy. If, if he's even happy. No comment. It's like, oh, I gotta turn and go the other way before he sees me.
Yeah, it's, that's a whole new story, whole nother story.
Doesn't say anything, you're on camera.
It's all right, he needs to be here. Okay, Jeff, thanks.
Thank you.
You say if we're gonna move right on down, our next item is a, an executive session.
Hey Jeff, will you close that door?
So I'd entertain a motion going to executive session for 2061D.
Like motion we go into executive session per Idaho Code 742061D.
Noun and second by roll call.
Hang them and I.